Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the meeting of Arlington ISD trustees on June the 11th, 2020 at 4:08 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provision of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that has been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on June 11th, beginning at 4:04 PM, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 30551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on the agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 5:15. At this time, we will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for June 11th, 2020, beginning at 5:35 PM. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Please join Mr. Chappa in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Please silence all cell phones. Please mute if you are not speaking to avoid any disruptions to the typing. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we're going to skip around a little bit on our agenda. We're going to go to action item B, and I'm going to pass the microphone to Mr. Chappa.
Thank you, President Mays. A few months ago, this Governance Committee has started making it a priority to catch up on some of our facility naming nominations that have been submitted over the past couple of years. And one of those individuals who received quite a few nominations is up tonight. And for further details, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chappa and President Mays. It is, and I don't think they are on the Zoom yet, but we're going to continue and go ahead to honor this. Let me, let me check. Is, is our guest there? We'll wait just a second.
Booy, since you have the mic, you have to do the entertainment this week.
No problem. You don't want me to dance, that's the scary part, Keisha. Hey, I see Becky's on there, so that's perfect. So, let me, let me, let me kick this off and say, this is one of the distinct honors the board gets to do. And I think our Governance Committee and all the board members for all the work we do on this. It's always hard on how we honor people within this district, but it's also a huge honor and something this board takes very intently. And I know we have a couple coming up over these next couple of months. And I appreciate my colleagues and all the back work and all the staff work that goes into this to honor those that have served and helped this district strive. Now, we have countless numbers of employees and volunteers and students. And it's hard to, the hardest part and the good thing is deciding who receives these honors. And so, tonight, we have a little different honor. We are naming someone who has been dedicated to the AISD for as, for as long as I've been alive and most everyone on this call has been alive. He has been helping the AISD in every which way possible. And as someone who went to Arlington High and got to experience him when I was in Arlington High, I understand why everyone made these recommendations and honor, and I couldn't think of anything better. So, you know, let's make sure I get it right. So, I am going to read a couple of things and talk about what we're doing tonight and what we're, who we're looking to honor and how we're looking to honor them. When you hear the Arlington High School fight song, it might as well have been written for our honorary tonight, Mr. Allen Avery. The song includes the line, "Hearts that are brave and true, loyal neither too." It would be impossible to find anyone more true or loyal to Arlington High than Allen Avery or the entire Avery family. Mr. Avery was born in 1926 and graduated from Irving High School in 1943. He spent four years in the United States Navy. And that stint was great for Allen for serving this country, but even greater because that's when he married his amazing wife Dorothy, who was his childhood sweetheart from the two years he lived in Arlington as a child. After their marriage, Allen finished up his stint in Saipan while Dorothy returned back to her hometown of Arlington, Texas. Avery's wife Dorothy was a graduate of Arlington High School, and all four of their children, Steve, Gary, Ronnie, and Rebecca, are part of the Colt family too. It's only fitting that the first time Allen Avery went to an Arlington High School football game was in 1951 with state championship. Allen showed the same kind of dedication to work that he has, he has had to Arlington High. After graduating from Arlington State College, now UTA, Allen started working at Otis Elevator on February 4th, 1949. When he retired after nearly 37 years in 1986, he did so without ever missing a day for being sick. Allen Avery's devotion to Arlington High runs deep. His priorities in life are God first, family second, and Arlington High third. All you have to do is see, is to drive down Davis Lane and look for the house with the green light strung up 365 days a year that is also a green and white horseshoe on the roof. The horseshoe is lit before the Arlington High football season begins and stays lit until the football season is over. How impactful Allen has been to this school. There's an award given out to the football player for the best linebacker given to him. Allen's love for Arlington High extends well beyond the gridiron and football field. He can be found in practices at every game. Go to a softball game, you'll find Allen. Go to volleyball games, go to pep rallies, you'll find Allen. If you're at a Colt pep rally, you'll find Allen there. And if you're not, you ask, why is he not there? And if you're a Colt and you need a little pep talk, just wait. Because you will probably get a phone call from him. And no matter what happens on any field you're participating in, win or lose, you know Allen Avery is always in your corner. Allen Avery is a life member of the PTA, and he contributes to various fundraisers throughout the year. Allen says Arlington High gives him a level of joy and purpose that can't be measured. That's been evident for almost 70 years. He was married to Dorothy for 60 amazing years. After her death in 2005, Allen has filled his life with all things at Arlington High. Students who no longer attend Arlington High still turn to Avery when they need someone to talk to. It's been decades that this man has been around our students and our staff, not only supporting the students, but supporting the staff on those rough days. He's a volunteer that goes above and beyond and has been around longer than any other volunteer in our day. I have some quotes from some people and some folks that said some things about Allen. He's been an active member at AHS for over 65 years. He attends the boys and girls sports and never fails to miss an event. He's so kind and willing to help AHS in whatever possible. Plain and simple, someone said, he is the number one Colt fan of all time. He's been a friend of many generations of Arlington High School athletes. He's been Arlington's biggest fan for the last 68 years. Mr. Avery supported both boys and girls sports, attending practices, pep rallies, scrimmages, and district and playoff games around the state. He's also been a loyal supporter of all fundraisers. And most importantly, he fills them whenever a parent, whenever a player needs a parent for senior night. Allen Avery is a dedication to doing the right things for kids. He supports kids day in and day out and wants to see them better. You can always ask Allen, who's really good, who needs a little work? You can find out which coaches are really good and what works. And if you swing by any practice, Mr. Avery will tell you what's happening. He knows what's going on, he knows the pulse. But more importantly, he's a supporter that everyone needs. Because some days, times can be rough, and it's important to see someone who's been around these fields. In my days, we always knew Mr. Avery was there. We always knew you could see where he's going through. No matter what, he was a good shoulder to talk with, and he always gave you that high five at any time you needed support. It's a great, great honor, and I'd love to show, and we'll make a motion in just a second. It's a great honor for us to be honoring Allen Avery tonight. It also just happens to be Mr. Avery's 94th birthday. So, not only do we get honoring for that, we get honoring for 94 amazing years on this earth, and we can't think of anyone better. I think Lisa or Frank, will you please show a couple of the slides and pictures just so we can show some of these and share the screen? And you'll see all the different pieces that Mr. Allen Avery has. Mr. Avery was also honored as the Arlington Athletic Foundation 2017 Unsung Hero Award as a truly dedicated spirit to that. With that, it is my distinct honor to bestow the honor and make a motion to name, to officially rename the indoor field at Arlington High School, the Allen Avery Indoor Field. Ms. Mays, that's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Hogg. Do I have a second? Okay. So, we have a motion made by Mr. Hogg, a second by Dr. Reich. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. So, please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion, or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. I cannot see everybody, so just pay attention and the next person. Start with Mr. Hogg because I can't see him. Mr. Hogg.
Booy, Hogg, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa.
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Hey, Ms. Met, thank you. Hey, Ms. Mays, I see, you know, it's, let's just disclose to everyone, this is not a normal day where we've done this. This is one of the challenges of doing this over Zoom. So, we've had to figure it out, and I think we're doing okay with it. But I see a face on my Zoom screen of Mr. Avery. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't allow a few words from our honorary Mr. Avery. And just to let everyone know, we will be planning, once we're all back to campus, a nice dedication ceremony, a way to honor this. This, this is what we kind of call gets the formality out of the way, and it's official after this day. And then we'll start, we'll start ordering signage and some of those type of things to honor Mr. Avery. So, Allen, I see you on there. Can, you never short the words, can we get a few words from you today?
I just did home of everything over there.
Can you hear him?
I can't tell you.
We can, Becky.
I, and I don't know what, I don't know if he gets what you're doing.
Well, we'll, we'll be, we'll be able to honor him, and we'll, we'll work. This is recorded, so we'll be able to show it, and we'll be able to show it to him, Becky, at any time.
But he, he doesn't know what you're voting on.
Becky, we voted on naming the indoor field after him. So, we'll, we'll follow back up with Allen. We'll, we'll go through with that. We're proud to honor him, we'll be even more proud to honor him in person when we can do that.
It's a much, it's a much tender than.
In the field there, yes, sir, Allen, it sure is. And Allen, we, Allen, we thank you for everything you've done. And thank you on, you know, it's just one of the students, but my colleagues saw it, and all the students across AHS that you've helped on those athletic fields, the growth. We can't thank you enough for all your support and, and more importantly, love. Sometimes students need love and support, and we can't thank you enough for all your help on that. Thank you to Coach Peach and all the athletic coaches and teachers and administration at Arlington High. Also, thank you to Eric Wyde, I know, I think a couple of them are on this call also. We can't thank you enough. So, we will get back to the fall. I know, I think they'll announce it to the players tomorrow when they're doing some running, that they're now running on the Allen Avery Indoor Field. And with that, Ms. Mays, I thank you all and my colleagues for all the support on this. I look forward to doing some more of these next couple of months. And with that, I pass it back over to Ms. Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Happy birthday, Mr. Avery.
Thank you. I appreciate all this.
Bye-bye, we'll see you soon.
Bye.
Okay, how exciting to do something nice to someone who's constantly doing something nice. Okay, so, we will go back on our agenda, which will be starting with our appointments. Consider ratification of administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Executive Director of Human Resources.
Do I have a motion to approve the ratification of the administrative appointments as discussed in executive session?
President Mays, I move that we approve the individual discussed in closed session.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mr. Chappa, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion, or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. Mr. Hogg. I need you unmuted. Unmute.
He's trying.
Okay, Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, vote yes.
Mr. Chappa.
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton. Ms. Walton, you're muted.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Thank you. Keisha Mays, I vote yes. And I have seen by a raise of his hand, Mr. Hogg also votes yes. Due to technical difficulties, we cannot hear his, we cannot hear him state his name. But Mr. Hogg has voted yes by raising his hand. So, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank, thank you, President Mays. And so, I'd like to announce that Mark Strand is our new Executive Director for Human Resources. Mark attended Concordia Teachers College for Bachelor of Arts in English, University of Illinois for Master of Arts in English, and University of North Texas for Master of Education in Ed Administration. Most recently, he's been our Director of HR Customer Service, has been a principal at the Newcomer Center, principal at Anderson Elementary, a principal at Crouch Elementary, a principal at Dunn Elementary, and has been an assistant principal at Sherrod. He's also taught second and sixth grade and fourth grade, and has taught English and seventh grade and eighth grade throughout his career. So, congratulations to Mark. And we'll bring these individuals that we're ratifying to a future board meeting for another introduction. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos, and congratulations, Mr. Strand. Next on our agenda is our public hearing. We will open our public hearing on optional flexible school day programs for the 2019-2020. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and this is an item we bring on a yearly basis for our optional flexible school day program, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. During the 2019-20 school year, 253 students were enrolled as flexible attendance students at 600 New York, completing 1,344 classes. 16 additional students remained at their home campus for instruction, and a total of 269 students participated in optional flexible school day program. This year, 125 of those students graduated. 161 students are currently still enrolled at either the dropout prevention center or their home campus, and 92 students have dropped out. Those students are among the most vulnerable students in the district and include students who have completed all coursework but who have not passed the state mandated tests. During the 2019-20 academic year, 92 students were enrolled as flexible attendance students at Arlington Collegiate High School, participating in optional flexible school day program. All of these students graduated in June of this year. They were able to participate in a variety of college courses offered during traditional school hours as well as non-traditional hours. Optional flexible school day program allowed students to participate in non-traditional course times that included evening classes, Saturday classes, and online classes. Students had the flexibility to take courses at Arlington Collegiate High School, the Dan Dyford Career Tech Center, multiple Tarrant County college campuses, and the University of Texas at Arlington. This flexibility helps all students to acquire their high school diploma as well as allowing 93% of the class of 2020 to acquire an associate's degree. President Mays.
At this time, I will confirm, Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No, ma'am, no registered speaker for this open forum.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we will open our public hearing on optional flexible school day program 2020-21. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and this is for the 2020-2021 school year. So, Dr. Wertz.
Good evening again. The optional flexible school day program may be implemented for students in grades nine through 12 who are, one, at risk of dropping out of school, two, participating in an approved early college high school plan, three, attending a state-approved innovative redesigned school, and/or four, require an alternate academic route due to the denial of credit in one or more classes because of not meeting state attendance requirements. For the upcoming school year, we will continue to rely on this program for our district's dropout prevention program housed at 600 New York and our early college high school students as well. In doing so, the optional flexible school day program will grant students in these transformational programs access to a flexible schedule beyond that of a traditional 180-day, five-day-a-week requirement, including courses on weekends, night classes, extended day classes, and flexible schedules throughout the year to accommodate courses beyond the traditional 18 weeks a semester. Under the optional flexible school day program designation, the school district may receive funding based on the actual time a student is in attendance, from as low as 45 minutes a day to a maximum of 10 hours a day. Minutes are accumulated to maximize the average daily attendance, ADA, a student can earn during the 12-month period. Students must apply to participate. They must meet eligibility requirements and be afforded certified instructors in all educational services for which they're eligible as well as comply with the appropriate assessments during the regularly scheduled assessment period. President Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. And before we continue, since there were no cards for the optional flexible school day program 2019-2020, that public hearing is closed. Now, Mrs. Benjamin, to confirm, do we have any cards for the flexible school day 2020-21?
No, ma'am, there are no registered speakers for this section of the board meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Benjamin. Since we have no comments from anyone registered to speak, the public hearing on optional flexible day, school day program 2020-21 is now closed. Okay, now we come to the part of our agenda for open forum for agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No, ma'am, no registered speakers.
Okay. Okay, since we have no registered speakers, we will continue to the next item on the agenda, and that is our action items. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, thank you, President Mays. And tonight, we bring as an action item a consideration for a resolution regarding policy FFAA related to physicals, student physicals, and during this time, and modifications to that policy by resolution. We covered this with our Governance Committee. And so, I'll turn it over back to Mr. Chappa as the chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. This resolution essentially makes a policy change that's been recommended by the UIL and is related to the COVID-19 situation, and really don't have anything further to add on it.
Okay. This is an action item. There's nothing else to speak. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve this, this resolution.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion?
Would you like, would you like me?
Yeah.
Dr. Reich.
If, if Ms. Walton should read the resolution into the record.
Okay. Ms. Walton, are you prepared to read the resolution?
Yes, Madam President, I am. This resolution is of the Board regarding policy FFAA local physical examinations. Whereas the university's inter-scholastic league, UIL, constitution and contest rules are the official rules that govern all UIL-sponsored activities. Whereas on May 18, 2020, the UIL published approved amendments to the UIL Constitution and Contest Rules Sections 1105, 1205, and 1478, adjusting requirements related to pre-participation physical examinations for the 2020-2021 school year for the purposes of supporting social distancing and assisting with the workload of the medical professionals on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas Texas Education Code 11.151 gives the Board of Trustees the exclusive power and duty to govern and oversee the management of the public schools of the district, and whereas the Board finds that for the overall physical well-being of our students during this pandemic, a need exists to temporarily adjust our local policy provisions requiring annual pre-participation physical examinations for the purposes of aligning practices with the revised UIL Constitution and Contest Rules. Whereas parents will still have the option of a pre-participation physical under this resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District makes the following temporary adjustments to policy FFAA local physical examinations. Prior to participating in a designated UIL program or other district extracurricular program identified by the superintendent, a student shall undergo a physical examination in accordance with the required schedule established by the UIL, including the approved amendments to the UIL Constitution and Contest Rules Sections 1105, 1205, and 1478. For the 2020-2021 school year, the district suspends its locally established requirement in FFAA local for annual physical examinations. The authority granted by this resolution to adjust FFAA local shall only apply for the 2020-2021 school year unless the Board takes future action.
Thank you, Ms. Walton, for reading that resolution. And I will just repeat that we did have a motion by Ms. Walton and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing that, since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion, or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Uwe Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Okay. Next on our agenda is discussion action items. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mason.
Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mason. We'll start with item B, consider preliminary 2020-2021 budget. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Powell. We have had discussion with the Finance Committee as well as we progress through different budget presentations and to budget adoption at some point in June. So, Ms. Powell.
Great, thank you. President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. We met last week, and we began to discuss our budget for next year, as you well remember. In last week's meeting, we focused on the general operating fund budget. We also hit upon some topics related to compensation. And we looked at this schedule at our meeting last week and talked about the work that was before us. And so we noted that typically in any June, there are between two and four discussions around budget. And so we are tonight entering to our second budget discussion. We do have two more on the agenda, one for next Tuesday and then one June 23, at which time we anticipate right now that we may adopt the budget that evening. By law, we have to adopt our budget for the 2020-21 fiscal year by June 30, because our fiscal year begins on July 1. So you can see here that the work around the budget actually continues into August with the adoption of the tax rate. So tonight will be the second discussion on the preliminary budget. And then as a separate item, we will talk about the notice that we will publish in the paper for the hearing that is on June 23. So I want to revisit the general fund for just a moment. You'll recall that last week, we talked about the fact that in our current year, the 2019-20 year, we adopted a budget that had a $6.9 million deficit. We anticipate that we will end the year with an $11.4 million surplus. And we have a preliminary budget that we're discussing this evening that has a deficit of $16.3 million. And that will change as we move forward, could change. And so we have a couple of items that we'll talk a little about here. We talked about both of these in the last meeting. Additional considerations beyond what is already built into the budget includes compensation, and then also tax rate considerations. As far as compensation goes, we had a good bit of discussion about that last week. And based on input we had from the Board, we have been working with the Board Finance Committee and also with the Texas Association of School Business Officials, their HR consultants on modeling different levels of compensation and adjustments to compensation. That work is continuing, and I anticipate that we will bring that back for further discussion later this month, one of our next two meetings. On the tax rate consideration, we want to have a little more discussion about tax rates and what it means when we talk about adopting a tax rate and what the requirements are for adopting tax rates for school districts. We'll start the discussion actually with a look at our preliminary property values. We showed the slide last week. This is a history of our property values as reported by the Tarrant Appraisal District. In the far right-hand column, the bar in gold, is our estimate of what property values will be once they are certified to us on July 25. We've received a preliminary report from the Tarrant Appraisal District. And we know that from the point that we get that preliminary report in May until the point that they finally certify values in July, that people, taxpayers, property owners, appeal their values and TAD completes its work on appraisals. And so we know that the values will change between now and in July 25. Based on historical data, we are projecting that those certified values that we receive in July will have no growth in them. And so you can see the 0% estimated growth here, and that's what we've used as we have built our budgets. We also saw this slide last week. It's a list of all of the school districts in Tarrant County. And they, there are 21 of them. They are listed here in order from highest total tax rate to lowest total tax rate. And Arlington ranks 17th on this list in the 2019 year. There are four districts that have rates less than us. 11 of these districts, over half of them, have raised their tax rates, their MNO portion of their tax rate to the level that they were required to have a tax ratification election. This is a history of our tax rates over the last 10 years. And in the bar on the far right, what you see is that this year's rate is less than last year. This begins to show the impact of House Bill 3 that was passed by the legislature last spring. In House Bill 3, the legislature wrote into statute that they would buy down property tax rates for school districts. And they would then increase state funding to replace the dollars that school districts lose by lowering their tax rates. So the amount of compression, as they call it, or reduction in the maintenance and operations portion of a school district's tax rate is based on formula. So the state prescribed this past year the level of reduction that districts were required to make. And they have different, slightly different rules, but still rules going forward on what that compression should look like. And now, in 2019, the compression was the same for all school districts. Going forward, it becomes differentiated based on your property value growth. So we'll talk about that again in just a minute. This slide is actually published by TEA, and it shows the breakdown of the total maintenance and operations tax rate. It's really broken into two parts. The state defines what is tier one. Tier one is the portion of the tax rate that the state reduced last year. They also reduced the portion of the tax rate that's commonly referred to as copper pennies. We do not tax any of these pennies currently, and so we were not subject to any reduction for those pennies. Going forward, beginning with this upcoming tax year, this slide shows that most districts will have a, what they call a maximum compressed rate of $0.91.64. Districts can go up to $1.8.64 this year. So everything between this tier one rate of $0.91.64 and that $1.8 rate is what is referred to as the tier two portion of our tax rate. And that is split into two parts. The first eight pennies are referred to as golden pennies. The remaining nine pennies are referred to as copper pennies. They get their names because of the dollars that they generate inside of the state funding formula. So we'll look at that in just a minute. Currently, districts up to this point have been able to tax up to four golden pennies with voter, I'm sorry, with board approval. Anything beyond that point required voter approval. This year, based on legislation, school boards have the option to tax one additional penny, and it will be a golden penny. So anything above this rate right here, this $0.96.64, would require approval by the voters in a tax ratification election. So when you talk about our rate and where we expect it to be next year, you see that here. I'll start by looking at the 2019-2020 rate. We currently tax at $0.97 on our MNO tax rate. Because of the compression required by the state, our rate will be lowered, we believe, to that $0.91.64 that we looked at just a moment ago on the last slide. You add to that our four tier-two pennies, and so you get to this calculated MNO rate of $0.95.64. We also levy a tax to pay bonds. It's called the INS rate, interest and sinking rate, or debt service rate. We expect, based on our debt payments that are due this upcoming year, that we can lower our debt rate by one penny. So our tax rate in total, we anticipate, based on where we are today, and before any additional choices are made, we know that our tax rate will be reduced by $0.36. And we've discussed the fact that HB3 requires school districts to lower their, the maintenance and operations portion of their tax rate. That the level going forward, the level or the amount of that reduction is based on the growth in your property values. The state has a formula for how that's applied. Then you add to that those, any tier-two pennies that you already have. Arlington has four. And then your debt service rate. And again, as I mentioned, we expect that our debt rate will drop by at least a penny. We'll talk more about that in just a minute. So our total tax rate is expected to drop by $0.36 before we make any further choices. And again, districts do have the option to tax one additional penny of MNO tax with approval by the Board of Trustees. But that does for use, it generates some additional state aid that we would not have access to otherwise. And we talked about those golden pennies and those copper pennies. The golden pennies generate a lot more state funding than the copper pennies do, but they both generate additional state aid that we would not have access to if we were not taxing those pennies of tax. So this slide, it's very busy. I think I can walk through this fairly quickly and simply, though. Let's start with the row that is highlighted in yellow. This is that rate we were just looking at. This is where we said that before we make any additional choices, we expect that our MNO tax rate will be $0.95.64 this upcoming year. We also know that our debt service rate, or INS rate, will drop at least one penny from last year. So our total rate, before we make any additional choices, is $1.27.507. That's a reduction of $0.23 from last year's rate. Now then, we talked about these additional pennies. Districts can add one more penny to the tax rate with unanimous board approval. And you see that here. Actually, what this chart shows is each additional penny between the rate that's calculated for us now and that maximum rate that we saw just a moment ago, our previous chart, of $1.8.64. There's 13 more pennies between the rate calculated for us now and that maximum rate. So what this chart shows is for each additional penny, the change that that makes to our total tax rate after compression, after that drop in the INS rate. And then on the far right-hand side, in green, and then in the peach color, that shows the additional dollars of revenue that would be generated at each extra penny of tax. The column highlighted in green shows the additional revenue for each penny of tax. The column in peach is the cumulative. So as you go down the chart, it keeps adding the additional dollars to that total. So as an example, just to kind of give the context here, we can pick any point on here. So say seven cents. If the Board determined that it was necessary to raise the MNO rate seven cents to fund the budget and our programming, then that extra seven cents of MNO tax would actually only increase the total tax rate by $0.464 because we've already been compressed by the state and our debt service rate, we know, has dropped by at least one penny. So to the owner of the average value home, that would cost that homeowner another $86 for the year, or $7.18 per month. You can see here in this column highlighted in green, some of these pennies, the first four, these are the golden pennies, and they are worth a lot more money than the last nine that are on here that are the copper pennies. So you could see that if we were to levy seven more MNO pennies, we would have, four of those pennies would generate about $6.9 million each. The first one, $5.6 million, the next three, $6.9. And then the next three would generate about $3.3 million. And so the total that that additional seven cents of MNO tax rate would generate would be $36.5 million. So that's kind of how you read this chart. It helps you get an understanding of what the impact of a choice would be wherever you might be looking along the spectrum of the tax rate. So with that, we saw this slide last week and talked about a timeline for adopting the tax rate. Remember, we can raise our tax rate one penny from where it is now on the MNO rate. Anything above that would require a tax ratification election that would be held on the November general election day, if an election were to be called. So this timeline shows the flow of work between now and when that election would need to be called if we were to consider this. We always receive property values in July. Usually, it's on July 25. And that's a Saturday this year. So July 24 is the date we expect to get our certified values from the Tarrant Appraisals District. TEA then will request data from all school districts on your property values and your current tax rates. And then they will make their calculation of what your maximum compressed rate is for the upcoming year, and they report that back to school districts on August 5. August 7 would be the last date that the Board would need to meet and vote on a proposed tax rate if there was a desire to raise the rate beyond that one extra penny. And then August 17 then is the deadline to actually vote on that rate that would trigger a November election. So August 17 is the deadline to call an election for November. So the other thing that we will discuss tonight, beyond the general fund, the items we just talked about, are the other four funds that we adopt a budget for each year. We have the Food Service Fund, the Natural Gas Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and our Construction Fund. So you all received a packet, an updated budget document that had the same schedules we looked at last week for the general fund. And we've added to that the detailed budget schedules for each of these four funds. And so what you're going to see here is the same look, that very summarized version of the budget for each one of these funds with a little information about it. So for food service, our Food Service Fund is counted for as a special revenue fund. The revenues that fund that program come from the National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs. Most people know those as the free reduced meal programs, commodities programming, and also meal prices that commodities programming, and also meal prices that are charged to students and adults who eat in our cafeterias and who are not eligible for free or reduced meals. We do not fund the food service with any funding out of the General Fund. This fund makes its own way, if you will. Breakfast and lunch meals that were served this year, this just gives you a context, this is actually down about thirty percent this year because of the closure from March to the end of the school year. What I'm showing here actually broke the meal count down into two pieces. So through the May or March sixth, the date was our last day in school before spring break and before the COVID-related closure began, we served six million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six meals for our food service program. The curbside program that started, and actually that should say March sixteenth. From March sixteenth through the last day of school, we served another one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand meals. So to date, or through May twenty-eighth, the total number of meals that we served was eight point one million meals. So that is down from previous years because of the closure. About seventy-two percent of our kids are eligible for free or reduced meals. And then we have, take six hundred and thirty people to run that operation. It is an enormous operation. For this upcoming year, we have, we will be raising the price on lunches at the secondary level by ten cents. That's based on the USDA Paid Lunch Equity Calculator that, so calculation you go through to make sure that your own paid meals are not subsidizing, or I'm sorry, I said it backwards, that your reimbursed meals are not subsidizing paid meals. So we'll be raising the lunch price of the secondary schools by ten cents. No other increases are planned for other meals, either elementary school lunches or any of the breakfast meals. Also reduced price meals, there's no change in that rate. Thirty-four campuses this upcoming year will operate what USDA refers to as the Community Eligibility Provision. It's a, a procedural program that allows us to be funded on a formula basis, be funded at a free rate for students at particular schools. And so based on the numbers of kids who qualify for free and reduced meals and the cost to, to provide the programming of all of our schools, we've got thirty-four that makes sense for us and that qualify for that community eligibility provision. So all the students at those thirty-four campuses will eat free breakfast and lunch meals. So looking again at the very, very summarized budget for the Food Service Fund, what you see here are their total revenues and total expenditures and a surplus or deficit. I'll call your attention first to our projection for the current year. We are expecting to have a deficit here of three point, almost three point nine million dollars. This is because of the program that we've ran since the point that school was closed through the end of the year. We will not be fully reimbursed for this by the federal government, we've determined. But it was certainly critical and important to all of us that, that we feed all of our students. And we're very proud that we've been able to do that. We have a very healthy fund balance in our food service operation. And so whatever of this deficit is ultimately not reimbursed to us, that will come from the Food Service Fund balance that began the year at fifteen point five million dollars. If all of that winds up coming out of fund balance, then our fund balance would be eleven point six million dollars. For this upcoming year, just like we talked about for the General Fund in our meeting last week, we are planning for a normal year. That may change. We may have to amend our budget going forward to recognize changes in operations. But we anticipate that we will operate this year with a surplus of about seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And just like we spoke about last week with the General Fund, there's nothing yet incorporated into the budget here for employee compensation increases. With our Natural Gas Fund, this is a fund also accounted for as a special revenue fund. We set this up many years ago when leases began to be let for mineral rights in the Barnett Shell. And the board took an action some years ago to formally commit these funds for future special projects. And so we don't bring to you tonight a particular special project to budget or to appropriate, but at any point during the year, the board can amend this budget and appropriate monies out of the equity or the fund balance for a particular special project. We expect to end this current year with a twelve point eight million dollar fund balance in the Natural Gas Fund. Oil and gas prices, as we all know, have, have dropped dramatically in the last few months. They've come back just a bit in the last couple of weeks. But I think indications are that, that they, they will continue to lag a bit. Production is also down. So we are anticipating lesser royalty revenues this upcoming year. Also, investment earnings are down. And so we expect to earn less interest on the money that we do have in fund balance here. But with the budget you see here, we would anticipate ending the year with a thirteen point six million dollar fund balance in this fund. The seventy-five thousand dollars that you see here is what we budget each year for anything related to legal work on this fund. On the Debt Service Fund, this is the fund where we accumulate tax revenues to pay principal and interest on our bonded debt. And then this is the fund from which we write the checks, if you will, to pay for principal and interest that are due each year. We've already talked about the tax rate just a little bit. We are estimating right now that rate to be maybe thirty-one point eight six seven cents this upcoming year. That is one penny less than last year's rate. And that generates the dollars that are needed to pay principal and interest due next year. Now, we are working with our financial advisors, Hilltop Securities, on a couple of things to potentially allow us to reduce that rate even further next year. One will be, we've got, as you'll see in just a minute, some surplus fund balance here that we can apply to help pay debt as it comes due. And then also, we will be, we are talking about the potential of refunding some outstanding bonds. That's very much like refinancing your house, when you refinance a house at a lesser interest rate. We anticipate bringing an item to the board next week that would begin that process by delegating authority to the superintendent to execute a refunding within certain parameters in the coming weeks. So we will not, we are not adopting a budget, or I'm sorry, a tax rate now for this. Just like with the General Fund, we will actually adopt our tax rate for the Debt Service Fund in August after we get our certified values. So we'll just jump straight to next year's column here and talk about next year's budget. We anticipate that, or we know that we have scheduled debt payments totaling ninety-three point seven million dollars. So we have to raise the revenue to pay that through property taxes. And so in looking at our available, or at our property values and what we're projecting values to be, we're projecting that we would need thirty-three point four million dollars in tax revenue to pay this debt. This is where now we're beginning to have some discussion with Hilltop Securities about opportunities to maybe instead of taxing it, a level that generates ninety-three million dollars, maybe we're able to use some surplus fund balance here. Twenty million dollars perhaps to help us over the next several years, actually, fund some of our debt payments so that we can reduce the amount of, of tax that we have to levy in that year. So we hope to be bringing that back to you by the end of the month as we adopt our budget. If we have not executed a refunding by then, this will be the budget that the board sees and actually considers for adoption. And then if we are able to execute a refunding, then we'll come back to you and amend the budget for that. This little bit of deficit you see here, this actually is more of a timing thing. The tax year doesn't match our fiscal year. So each year when we levy a tax, the tax that we're levying actually covers what's left in our fiscal year. And then the August payment. We make payments in mostly in February and in August each year. We have a couple of other very, very small ones. But the tax rate that we levy in each year covers us through the remainder of our fiscal year through June and then provides funding to cover that next upcoming August payment. And then a little bitty one in early September. So this is just a timing difference because we've levied a tax in this current year that, that covers that payment. All right. The Construction Fund then is the, the last one of the four other funds that the board adopts each year. This is where we account for proceeds from our bond sales and, and build the projects that are included in our bond programs. So we have a couple of projects that are still underway from the twenty-fourteen bond program that will wrap up in this upcoming fiscal year. The two major ones are the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex. There are a few other little condition projects and technology purchases that will still be finished out there as well. The bulk of what you're going to see in terms of expenditures for this upcoming year are two fun projects that were included in Phase One of the twenty-nineteen bond program and in Year One. So on the construction, in the construction side of the bond program, we refer to it as Phase One because it actually, the work crosses multiple years. The other areas, as you'll see, we call it Year One. So the projects listed here are the ones that get underway in Phase One. Many of them are already underway now. They started the spring. We sold bonds, the first tranche of bonds for the twenty-nineteen bond program in February. And so those dollars have already come to us. We have them. We're now beginning to spend them on the projects you see listed there. For the technology area, these are the priorities for Year One. And we've sold again in February, some of the bonds we sold were to cover these expenditures. New technology for classrooms for our classroom standard, making sure that we have appropriate number of devices for the new pre-K classrooms that we're adding with the implementation of full-day pre-K. Document cameras for classrooms, also secondary schools getting calculators, new calculators. And then making sure that we're providing for one-to-one programs where we have them, such as the STEM Academy at Martin, Arlington Collegiate High School and Arlington College and Career High School. And then also, we replaced copiers out of the bond program and we have those on a scheduled rotation. So we have some copiers being replaced this year. The fine arts piece of the bond program, you see a list here, things will be buying instruments. Also, elementary music equipment. In the visual arts area, we are buying pottery wheels, kilns, kiln-related equipment, art tables, grand pianos across our secondary schools. And then uniforms, marching band for Bowie, drill team for Arlington and Martin, and then choir equipment across various schools. Transportation area, we'll be buying new vehicles. We're buying a total of eighteen buses, three of them are special ed, fifteen of them are regular ed buses, and twelve of our shuttle buses, those small buses that help us move kids efficiently within the district during the day. We're also buying a total of twelve service vehicles and two Suburbans in the upcoming year and band trailers. And these are already ordered. The board has actually already approved the purchases that you see listed here. Because again, as I mentioned, we've already sold bonds. Those bonds were received in March and, and we began spending those dollars and the board has already approved the purchase of these vehicles. So a lot of these purchases, though, actually cross fiscal years. We may order all these vehicles now and not, we will not get all of them until into the fall. This is a, a look again, high-level summary of the Construction Fund. We, as I mentioned, in we, February, we've sold bonds. You can see three hundred and sixteen million here. That's the total dollars from our bond sale plus interest earnings and other miscellaneous revenues in the bond funds. We've spent ninety-eight million. So the bulk of that money has not yet been spent. It closes to fund balance. We now pull that out of fund balance and, and spend that in the new year along with the projects here that have not yet completed. And so we anticipate that we will end the year with a six point seven million dollar surplus in this fund. We plan to sell bonds each year of the five-year bond program. So we will amend this budget next year in February to record the sale of the next round of bonds that occurs then for, that begins to fund Phase Two of the bond program. So that's an overlook of those other funds and information about property values and tax rates. Again, we plan to, in a separate item that we'll look at in just a minute, we're going to talk about the notice that we will be publishing in the paper for the hearing that will hold on June twenty-third to discuss the budget and the tax rate. We have to have that hearing before we can adopt the budget. And then next week, we will bring back all of this for more discussion with the board. And also then on June twenty-third, we can continue the discussion. We'll make any final decisions that they want to about the budget and perhaps adopt the budget that evening. Ultimately, we have until June thirtieth to adopt the budget. And then you can see the values, we'll get certified property values in July and then adopt the tax rate in August. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Powell. Do any of the trustees have any questions? Yes, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Powell, I'm just curious, the ten cent increase on secondary lunches, I'm glad that it's not affecting the elementary, but can you tell me why it's not affecting also the elementaries?
Right. So we have to, the federal government requires that we go through a calculation each year for our meal prices, again, to make sure that we're not using those federal reimbursements to effectively subsidize paid meals. And so we go through that and we look at that calculation. We break it down between secondary and elementary. And we look at lunch prices and where we are compared to others. And we make only the increase that we're required to make. So this year, on the elementary side, we're in good shape. On the secondary side, we do need to raise that price just a little bit.
Thank you.
Any other trustees have questions? Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Okay, I don't see any hands. Mrs. Powell, okay, Mr. Hogg.
Yeah. And Ms. Powell, Ms. Powell, thank you so much. And let me ask, you know, listen, this, we've been going through this budget. We look at these. What's, what happens, you know, listen, and we're going to talk about the pandemic a little more. Maybe this question's better for that. What happens if there's a, there's a big dip in enrollment? Where, where's that go? I mean, where, you know, if the state doesn't allow, TA doesn't allow hybrid, you know, some students who aren't home that want to stay at home? Because we're going to have some families that don't want to send their kids back to school. We're hope, all hoping there, everyone's back. I mean, what's our, and I guess my question is, what's our fiscal risk with that is probably where we're coming?
And that, that's a good question. The state's working very hard right now to determine how they will let school districts count attendance. And attendance is what goes into the state funding forms. And that's different than enrollment, right? So I think they're trying very hard to make sure that school districts are not harmed on the attendance side. Okay. If for some reason our enrollment drops, that could have an impact on state aid. And it would depend on the extent of that drop. And I think we had a lot of discussion about that over the last few months in trying to just guess. We've actually talked with our demographers about this. And we don't have a good sense right now on what change could come in terms of enrollment. Our demographers tell us that a district like us that's fully built out, they, they can't project what might happen to enrollment. But we see more and more that there appears to be less concern, I guess I would say, about a major drop in enrollment. I think the expectation in general is that most kids are going to come back to school in some form, whether that's in an online environment or in person or some kind of hybrid circumstance. It's, I think Dr. Barlow was the one that said it best one day. It's, you know, kids would not choose to move to another nearby city or another state, even, even another country to someplace where they don't have the same circumstance of dealing with COVID-19. So everyone is dealing with this. And I think the, the feeling is more and more that, you know, that, that more kids will come back to school. To answer your question again about the extent of the risk, again, depends on the actual drop. Let's say that we lost two and a half percent of our kids. That could be as much as $12 million of funding. That would be about 1,500 kids. So that's, that's something that, that we'll watch very, very closely as we get started. And I don't know, Dr. Cavassos, if you want to add anything in to that.
I'll just add, Mr. Hogg, that that's, that's a part of the discussion with the commissioner that we meet with him, a group of superintendents every week. And first on the attendance question, our feedback, pretty strong, is do not overcomplicate taking attendance. This is not the time to overcomplicate taking attendance. And, and you can just kind of think through some of the, the messiness with that. If you're at home, does it have to be daily attendance? And if so, what time and things like that? This is not the real time to overcomplicate it because it will just penalize districts and schools and students, really. The enrollment situation, we're kind of what Ms. Powell described. But our feedback is to also set some type of floor, for lack of better words, with loss. And don't just assume that loss is actual loss, that the kids are not going to ever come back to the school system. We are in this transition in this period of time. And so we've, we've given him the feedback to kind of cap it at some point if there is loss that's, that's relative, you know, reasonable so that we don't just have these kind of drops. And it's not just Arlington, it's all school districts in Texas. Attendance is the big one as well because how you count it, if it's overcomplicated, we will, we will miss the mark in, in schools across Texas.
And I appreciate that. And I know that's one of those glass ball questions that none of us have the, you know, predict the future, but we do have to plan. So and, you know, it's that challenge of if we do lose students and it is, you know, majority of our cost is with our staff. So it is a, it is a major risk for us on, on there. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Yes, Dr. Raj.
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you for the, the information, Ms. Powell. It's, there's, there's a lot of considerations this year, much more than I've ever seen in all my years. That's for sure. And I, I just, to clarify, when you were showing the, the preliminary budget, we're at a 16, over $16 million deficit. That's before we ever start any discussion of what we're doing and taking care of our, our staff. And as a board, we did make a commitment to adjust for the, the inequities that occurred to our district as a result of HB3. So that, that number is certainly going to increase. One of the things I just, to, to be clear, so our expenses have increased from last year's proposed, but by about 11 and a half, I think it was 11 and a half million. And just to be clear, so that everybody understands that this isn't 11 and a half million dollars over and above on a, a spending frenzy type of situation. You have been very fiscally prudent, all of our departments have. Can you just speak to where that comes from just a little bit? I, I'm, as head of finance committee, we, we've discussed this as, as committee. I think it's important for the entire board to, to know and understand that this isn't, you know, budget creep, bloat, et cetera. And it's important for our community as well. Could you speak to that?
I, I can. And if I can show my screen here, I'll just put it up. This was in, this slide was in the presentation last week. This details that increase. The bulk of that increase comes from the implementation of full-day pre-K, which is one of the mandates of House Bill 3 and something that we're very pleased that we get to do. But almost $4.8 million of that increase comes for the addition of 55 teachers and 55 teaching assistants to add 55 new classrooms of pre-K. Also, other large things, opening the Fine Arts Center and Athletics Center adds about $2.3 million total in operating expenses. Those are custodian, security officers, the building directors, utilities in those buildings. As you can imagine, those buildings will get a lot of use and consume a lot of, of electricity costs especially and operating costs, including maintenance on a pool, two pools, actually. So that's a second big cost. Property insurance premiums also have gone up dramatically this year. We talked about that even in the middle of this past year as our insurance renewed during the 2019, 2020 year. We had some pricing that was held flat for three years and we ended that three-year price fix, if you will. And in, in, in the meantime, there've been a number of hailstorms in the state of Texas and property insurance for large institutions has gone up dramatically. So we were, we benefited for a couple of years with the pricing we had in place. But that now has, has increased dramatically. That accounts for nine and a half of that $11 million. There's also another big piece is in, in terms of the 11, there is money that it's, it's a book entry that we're required to, to book every year. We don't actually write a check for it. We have to recognize a revenue and an expense for the money that the state of Texas contributes to TRS on behalf of our employees. And so that is going up this year. And so that pretty well takes care of the, the difference between here and that $11 million. Cybersecurity was another smaller item, but still one of the increases in increasing some systems, access control door, access controls in our schools, some service and software on that. Security camera maintenance. So those are the primary things that make up that, that increase.
Well, thank you very much. I, I do appreciate that. It, it just can't be, it, it can't be overstated. The, when I, when I was on this board as a newbie, we, we were in a similar situation of looking at deficit budgets. But the, 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 the way you approached everything in your direction, given to every department, it, it shifted really to essentially a zero-based budget. Completely different than what some might say school districts or public education does. And so I really appreciate the, the stewardship through the, the work of, of you, through the direction of this board. I just say thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to having more discussion. There's, this is just the beginning. We're in the midst of budget. It is so, so complex this year with the salary inequities, with the pandemic and all those factors that Mr. Hogg was asking on the, the attendance, et cetera. So that, that's all I have at this point. Thank you very much for all of your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. And thank you for chairing our finance committee and thank you for asking that question. Do I have any other trustees with any questions or comments? Okay, I see no hands. Dr. Cavassos, do I need to bring you back or Ms. Powell, do you want to just continue?
Sure, we'll move on to discussion action item A.
Okay. All right, let me share my screen here. Put that in presentation mode. So the next item is very related. You heard me mention a minute ago that we are required to hold a public hearing on our budget in our proposed tax rate for our upcoming year. Our fiscal year begins July 1st, so we have to adopt our budget before July 1st. We do not adopt our tax rate, though, until August. So those two things get the tick separated. We wait until we have our, our certified property values from Tarrant Appraisal District before we adopt our tax rate. But we do have to hold this hearing before we can adopt the budget. The Comptroller's Office prescribes a form that we publish, and actually it's set in statute, that, that provides information about the budget and about property values and proposed tax rates. I can't say enough that, you know, the, what you see here, this is our, our estimates based on what we know now. And we will not, while we call this a proposed rate, because that's what the, the notice refers to it, we don't actually adopt the tax rate until August. But we do have to publish this notice 10 days before the hearing. And we include in that what they call the proposed MNO and debt service tax rates. And we state in there what is the voter approval rate. What most of us know is the old, the old term was rollback rate. All right. So each year we ask the board to, to vote and tell us what rate we plan to put in that notice. So this year, now call to your attention again, we've looked at this on this previous slide. Our voter approval rate or our rollback rate is $1.28507 this year. That actually is, includes that one extra penny that districts can tax beyond the rate that we talked about a minute ago. And that is a rollback, that is the rollback rate. Any tax rate above that would trigger an election. And we would, any rate that the board considers above this rate, we would need to republish this notice and have another hearing. And, and we would do that potentially in August. So that, that hearing is scheduled for June 23rd. We have to post the notice 10 days, at least 10 days prior to that. So by Saturday, this notice has to be published. And in, in again, as we've talked before, we have to adopt the budget by June 30th. And like I just mentioned, that if we are to consider any tax rate above this voter approval rate, then we would come back and publish another notice and hold another hearing at that time. This is the slide we looked at in the previous presentation that shows that we are not expecting any growth in our property values this year. And then this slide shows that voter approval rate. Again, this has that one extra penny in it. That's the only difference between that and the estimated rate we looked at in the previous presentation. This is the rollback rate, what the state now refers to as the voter approval rate. This is the rate that we will publish in that notice. So with that, we're asking the board this evening to, to vote on this rate, this voter approval rate that gives us the direction we need to put it in that notice and get that notice published.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Powell. Do we have any questions or do we have a motion coming from the trustees? No questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
President Mays?
Yes.
I move to adopt the proposed tax rate as discussed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapa. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Everybody was waiting for second. Mr. Will Banks, I saw your hand first. So we've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Okay, since this meeting is being conducted virtually.
President Mays, Dr. Raj.
Yes.
I, I, I just wanted to say that, so that would be at that 1.28507, correct, Ms. Powell?
Correct. That's, that's the voter approval rate and that's what's in the notice.
Okay, okay. And based on my, my comments earlier as far as the already deficit situation that we're in and all of the inequities that we're, we're working with to try to combat, I absolutely support this move. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. So once again, we've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. Dr. Raj.
Aaron Raj moved or approved vote yes, sorry.
Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Uli Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. All present vote in the affirmative and motion passes. Next on our agenda is to consider the schematic design for the John Webb Elementary School. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mason. This evening we bring this, this moment of, of progress here with our bond. And so we have a schematic design for Webb Elementary. And I want to thank ahead of time the board subcommittee, Mr. Hogg, Dr. Raj and Ms. Fowler for, for helping us with this process. And so we also have the architects who are with us and Ms. Powell will introduce them. Again, this is, this is one of those opportunities and times, you know, when we talked a lot about the bond and replacing aging facilities. Well, here we are with a schematic design for what will be the new Webb Elementary. And I think that's, it's a significant time in our district in terms of, of replacing aging facilities in areas that, that really need, need upgrades for the learning environment. So it's been an exciting time planning this with, with both staff and students. And, and so I'll turn it over to Ms. Powell to introduce our guests.
Great, thank you. So President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Dr. Cavassos explained that this is part of our 2019 bond program. Included in the 2019 bond program, we are building, rebuilding four schools, three elementaries and a junior high. And so we jumped out as fast as we could get started on this. The, the entire East Arlington work is what we've called an East Arlington Master Plan. And things have to happen in a very, very specific, very careful order, if you will. And so we've already started work on the first piece of that. And you will be looking at a couple of other items in a few minutes on the consent agenda for easements related to some work at Pro Elementary. That's the first piece of that East Arlington Master Plan project. This is the next piece of all of that is the rebuild of Webb Elementary School. And so our, we were looking the other day, I think the current web was built in 1959. So it's 61 years old, served us very, very well for six decades. But it, it is not, it does not function like we But it is not, it does not function like we need it to in a modern learning environment. So we're very pleased that we're able to come forward now and and for that particular community, look at replacing that with a modern innovative building. So we've been working on this for several months. This actually began back well before COVID-19 struck us. We, as you'll hear in just a minute, have had a series of meetings with stakeholders being administrators, campus teachers, parents, kids, and taking input from all these folks that will live and use live in and use this building for many, many years to come. So architectural work always begins with what is called programming. And you begin by listening to your users and the people that utilize the space and live there, if you will, to understand what kind of programs will be offered, to understand what kind of spaces you need to offer those programs, adjacencies of spaces, size of spaces, circulation needs, support needs, all of these things. And the architects are very, very good listeners always and they they spend a lot of time at this. And then they go away and they begin their design and they come back and they work with our team. And and we just keep refining, keep refining until we get what we think is is what our stakeholder said, here's what we need. We are at that point now, it's referred to as a schematic design at this point, where we created those adjacencies and the layout of the building, the size of the building, and and even some frontal elevations to what the building will look like. We have been working, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, with the Board Construction Committee for Webb and have had a couple of meetings with them where we've shown them the design. They gave input. We've made some adjustments on that and so we'll be presenting it to you this evening. We have, I think there is one choice for discussion here with the full board that we'll get to towards the end of the presentation and that is some of the color combinations on the front exterior of the building. But but this is, this is one of those real happy things that we get to do. And it's very, very exciting. And so we appreciate our partnership with BRW Architects. They have done other work for us in the district and they they do a fabulous job and they are good listeners and we appreciate the time that they've taken and given to this project. So we've got two of the architects here with us this evening. We've got Lisa Lampkin and Anne Hildenbrand. And so ladies, I I think I'd already explained to them, I'll run the the PowerPoint slides. They'll have to tell me when to advance if I don't figure it out on my own. I'll try not to get too far ahead. And so I'm going to turn it over, Lisa, I think, to you or you can start. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and put it in presentation mode. All right.
Well, we are so honored to to be here this evening to present this important milestone to replace John Webb Elementary. Next slide of our team, your BRW team. And of course, I'm Lisa and Anne is here with me, my partner, to to walk us through the design. In a quick summary, in replacing the school, we'll design for just over 102,000 gross square feet, a future capacity of 900 students and and pre-K through sixth grade. Next. As as Ms. Powell said, we were so fortunate to be able to 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 meet with the community and the administration before the lockdown started. So we got to do that in person. So blessed. We'll be completing design towards the end of this year and we anticipate the new school opening in fall of 2022. Next slide. We started out our first stakeholder meetings with the district leadership. We talked a lot of things. But the next slide really highlights three things that were standouts about the existing community that was, will be incredibly important to capture going forward, predominant bilingual culture. The school is the heart of the community and its culture of community outreach and connection that exists. Next slide. And we define success as creating a new community gateway, being safe and inclusive, and of course, a place for kids. Next.
Now, our stakeholder two meeting, as you see here, it was at the school at Webb Elementary. And we added the teachers to the discussion so we could hear from them what they wanted to see, what their vision was, and we we received more detail on the individual spaces of the school. Next. And our third meeting included the kids, our most important stakeholders. We we let them have the opportunity to design their dream classroom. Next. And in that we gained a lot of, we learned a lot from the kids. They did in fact say they wanted to see outside and they wanted natural light and they wanted furniture that they could move around. Next. We also gave them the opportunity to tell us their likes and dislikes about spaces with these visioning boards. So that was was interesting. As you can see, not so interested in the traditional library, but wanted to see spaces they could sit and be comfortable in. Next. This is our site plan. As Ms. Powell said, this is a replacement school, of course. So the existing school is there located very close to the Cooper, North Cooper Street and Nichols Drive intersection. The school will remain there until the new school is complete. So the new school will be on the north side of the site. Next. This is, these are some photos of the views that you would see from the school and also some of the large existing trees. We're going to do our best to retain most of those. And this is a view to the west. Next. And then this, of course, is Cooper Street. So this is what you see to the east, very busy street. So we took that into consideration with the placement of the new school. Next. And this is the proposed site plan. So as you see below, on the south side is the area for future development, approximately six acres that could be used in the interim for play fields and recreation. And it also allowed us to get that traffic off of Nichols Drive and provide plenty of onsite queuing for during drop off and pickup. And so you can see the the east parking lot, the large parking for visitors is from the east and that's where the main entry faces. Next. Come in a little closer just to show you the circulation. That visitor parking creates a really nice buffer between Cooper Street and the main entry. It's about approximately 350 feet setback. The playgrounds are nicely nestled and protected behind the buildings. And there's additional staff parking and that's also where the dumpsters are located. And also very important, a separate bus loop. So we're keeping that parent and bus traffic separated. Next.
And in designing to honor community culture and establish a community gateway, we found inspiration in the sarafi blanket, a practical and beautiful item. It represents culture, community, comfort and beauty. All things a great school needs to be. You know, the sarafi has been used for centuries by all social classes for protection. And of course, it is beautiful. The intricate patterns in the center of the blanket were representative of the family. And it also symbolizes the importance of weaving, weaving students, community and educators together as a community. In the next slide, we illustrate some of the materials we're going to weave into the design. Brick detailing, a textural quality to the brick, a wood look soffit, warm tones, and color accent panels, which we'll talk about what that color is a little bit later, sun shades and clear glass. And in the, and several slides to follow, we've got a couple of options, as Ms. Powell said. The first one here, stepping fairly close to Cooper, looking in, you see two wings sort of embracing the entry court. And you see two colors in the solid color panels, a blue and the school green. And weaving in a thread of yellow accent as well. So if you step in a little bit on the next slide, you can really see that brick detail, the rich detail that you would see closer up. You see the warmth of the wood look soffit embracing you in in the covered entry as well. Now, so the next couple of slides show option two. Everything is the same except for the color. So we removed the blue and put in another tone of green to 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 really weigh in on the school green color and still still keeping that that flash of yellow accent as well. And stepping in on the next slide, you can really see how those two tones of green play against the clear glass. And it both are fantastic options to look at.
So this this is the floor plan, what we see inside of the building. It's a two-story building. On the first floor, we have all the main support spaces with the library. We have the administration up front, so they have full view of the parking lot and who's entering the building. There's a secure vestibule where visitors will have to check into the front desk before they enter the building and then the media center and parent center right up front. Also, on the first floor is our pre-K through K wing in our first and second grade. There are two open stairs that flank this main central corridor. So it provides easy circulation and ease to get to the second floor, avoiding some bottlenecking. And then, of course, there's the activity and the food service. The activity room will serve as the storm shelter for the school. Next. And this is the second floor. So the entire building is not two stories, just the colored areas you see here. It has the third, the fourth, the fifth and sixth grade and also the two STEM classrooms. There's additional teacher work rooms and resource rooms and of course, restrooms available. But what you'll see, which is super exciting, is that each individual grade is a learning pod. And in that learning pod, there's a collaboration space. It's the heart of that grade. And each classroom opens up to that collaboration space and there's views. There are views to the collaboration space from the classroom and also from the collaboration to the teaching space and they all open up to the central core. So with that, we have concluded our presentation.
And I just want to thank you once again for this opportunity. We're so honored to be here. It was a real special experience to collaborate with your team to reimagine John Webb Elementary. So we we stand ready for your questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Henenbrand and Ms. Langken. We appreciate the presentation. Do I have any trustees that have any questions at this time or comments? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Mays. On the second floor diagram, it indicates that there will be openings to the dining room activity look like.
Um, so those were, those are not open to view. That's just indicating a two-story level. So you won't actually be able to see into those spaces from the second floor. Just because of their high volume, when you're look, when you're cutting through the second floor, you're actually going, cutting through that high volume space.
I don't understand.
So for example, if you can imagine a typical classroom and its ceiling is is not much higher than, you know, a living room at home, right? A couple of feet taller than that and much higher. And so when we take a slice through the plan and show you the second floor, we're capturing the 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 extra height in the gym that's really on the first floor.
Okay, I understand that, but how open is open? I I have some concerns that especially in the cafeteria, the dining hall. I mean, will there be glass panels similar to what there is at Shackelford Junior High? Where you can look down in there and you get the light and so forth, but there's no way for anything to come from the second floor down into the first floor.
That is correct. They're completely enclosed and separate.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, back to kind of the beginning where you were showing the two footprints of the two, the old building and the new building. It doesn't have a number on it, but okay, keep going one more. No, well, not there, that one.
Yes.
No, no. I think it was. No. Go for, not backwards, go forward. Okay, one more.
One more.
Okay, one more.
There it is.
That one, that one. The footprint of the looks much larger than the footprint of the newer building. Can you explain that?
So yes, that what is shown there is all open for future development. That does not actually indicate the footprint of the existing building.
Okay, okay.
Going land that is reserved for future development.
Okay.
The whole district owns.
Thank you. Okay, so we are, the new web will be generally the same GSF as the old one. Is that correct?
It will, and it will be smaller because the web was
A junior high, yeah.
A junior high, which those are typically larger schools.
Right, right.
One is for 900 student capacity, it's roughly 102,000 square feet.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Are there any other trustees, questions or comments?
Ms. Mays. Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Mays and Anne and Lisa, thank you so much. And it's myself and Ms. Fowler and Dr. Raj served on a board committee to review this. We were, we were thorns in their side as we asked multiple questions about multiple colors. And we've, Mr. Horn, I think, stated it best, we're all still a little little shy over some colors that have been added into other buildings in the past and we didn't like them. Just full disclosure out there, there's been things added in the past that when they came about, looked weird. But I think as we explored multiple different colors, and I think this is the final guidance they need today from us, as we explored more colors and looked at that, I think the way the architects were able to bring the green back in, which as you know, green and yellow are the school's colors there. But this school does reside in the Lamar network. So adding in that blue and and I I love it when architects are very strong about a color and they think blue was a critical color. So I I think it does associate in, it's not a a random fuchsia or whatever. I don't even know another color that could be out there. But I do think they're matched numbers. I think the the panels of those colors they've added do match that. So I think we found a happy resolution and I appreciate the architects and Kelly Horn for working through everything to get us to that area. So whenever ready, I think we're ready to approve the schematic sign.
Dr. Raj.
Before I go, Ms. Walton, did you have a question related to what Mr. Hogg was talking about?
Yes, Dr. Raj. So which of the options? So which of the options on the color is the committee recommending?
I, we're pretty much landed on the tri-color with the blue.
Yeah.
And then the green and the yellow, which is the other option with just the green and the yellow.
I like, I like it with the blue also. I agree with your choice of option one.
Well, I can tell you for this board to put trust in color options within myself and Mr. Hogg is quite concerning. So thankfully, we do have the guidance of the architects to make us go in the correct direction.
Well, I agree with your choice.
Blue over maroon any day.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to digress, so.
I need a motion.
So before we get to the motion, and I'll, just a couple of questions. One, to Ms. Walton's point, the, looking at the size of the building being smaller, et cetera. We discussed this in committee, just for the full board to know, what the current enrollment there is at Webb versus what the planned capacity of this is, if you could speak to that real quick. And that's
For Horn, do you have that?
We're currently at 638 students at Webb and we are projected to remain at that number for the next six to eight years.
Okay.
Very, very close to that number.
And that doesn't include the expansion into pre-K, correct? So there's probably going to be, so I guess that would be my question as well. What is the anticipated enrollment? Or pre-K there?
It's still slotted to be roughly the same. We have a few students at the, in the early grades that are moving over into the Spear campus. And then we'll pick up a few students. So we're still projecting to be right around the same number, maybe a little over 640 students or so at this point.
Okay, very good. And then just one final question. Again, this is something that we discussed. As far as the parking lot screening to Cooper Street. Those are going to be shrubbery, taller trees. What does that look like? And what's the city requiring?
Right, we've had a preliminary meeting with the city and I'll let Ann speak to it a little bit more too. But during our preliminary meeting, we discussed a number of options. And the preferred route would be to use a series of perhaps earth and berms, shrubs, as you've noted, trees. Try to create a living screen that would still allow visibility of the school in a controlled way. And not hide it obviously from Cooper, but at the same time provide some form of protection, if you will, from the busy street. And so while it hasn't been completely fleshed out at this point, we have had discussions with the city about a number of options like that. And so Ann, would you like to elaborate if I left anything out?
No, that was very descriptive. So we, there was comment before of not wanting the trees to get too large. So we would pick a species that's probably more ornamental. So it will still provide the screening, but not just completely cover up the school with the trees.
Excellent, excellent. And I just also want to say that it's a very good design. We hear, in this discussion, we're talking a lot about the exterior and the look of the building. Just a little bit on the functionality. But what that speaks to is we're very comfortable with the design for what will lend itself towards a great building for student achievement and safety and security. All of those things we did talk about through committee. You've got it well-built into this plan. And that's first and foremost on our mind at all times. So I think it's a great design and I'll release the floor from there. Thank you.
I just had a real quick question. I didn't see, and I'm assuming it is somewhere in the schematic design, but the security vestibule at the front of the school for the entry?
Absolutely. It has a generous security vestibule and you turn into the front office and then out into the main corridor.
And Ms. Mays, a lot of the design at this point, being schematic, is still very very primary in a sense. And the detail has not been completely shown on the drawings. But you're correct, and Lisa's right, we will absolutely have our secure vestibule created there. And you can see a little bit with, I think Ms. Powell's displayed it there. You can see the two levels of doors that we have at the front. So without a doubt, this campus will have every advancement in security that we've employed at our other campuses. It will have state-of-the-art cameras, the security vestibule, which layers that security, you know, for people coming in. And then obviously our Raptor system that we use, the Aphone system that we use at the front door and so forth. So we've talked a lot about that with security already. And we most certainly will make sure that this meets or exceeds our specifications.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I see some other hand to ask, Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Ms. Mays. And thanks to my colleagues on the team for providing input on this. And to the architects, it's a beautiful building for someone who's put a lot of time in volunteering at that campus. Compared to what it has now, what we have there now. It's going to be amazing from what I see here. I do have a few questions though. Relating to having volunteered there, especially on the first day of school. Parking's traditionally been a huge issue there because none of the medical centers around there allow any parking in those lots adjacent to it. Can we pull up? I guess with that drive, that long drive that went to the back. Ms. Powell, can we, can we see an overhead of the outside again? Okay, so that, that drive, is that gonna? That goes pretty much around the perimeter of the school? Is that going to be large enough for on, on big event days where all the parents show up on the first day of school and park? Will there be plenty of parking along that drive and still allow for traffic to flow through?
It is a two-lane drive. So as long as a fire truck could pass by any cars that are parked, then yes, that is a that could be a possibility. We're not striping it that way because we are probably going to use both lanes. But in the event that you need overflow parking, that this parking lot couldn't accommodate, you could do that.
So how many slots roughly in the one that's? It would be on the south side of the building where the on Nichols Drive there, the little roundabout, how many parking slots are in that?
Those are seven spaces, one of which is a handicap space. And we anticipate that the sped population, because most of those kiddos come on the bus, they will predominantly enter from the south. So those additional spaces there are, will probably be used by parents that that want to drop off with the car. So there's just a few there.
Yeah, I now seeing the visitor parking, it does look ample on the new front entrance.
Yeah.
But it also says staff parking, so is
There's also quite a bit of staff parking behind the building. It's, it will actually accommodate more than just the custodial and food service staff. Some opportunity there and then in the visitor staff parking.
Okay, and then my next question is something that has happened a lot over the years with my kids. I know going through elementary school, we get kind of bulges in population. The kind of where the enrollment blows up in a grade and then that bulge kind of matriculates up through the grades. And then enrollment sinks again. Given the capacity or, we see like the first grade or the fifth grade classrooms? So currently at Webb, and Kelly, if I heard you right, you're saying the enrollment's probably going to stay flat?
That's what our demographics have shown us.
And currently they have four, five, five classrooms per grade level currently?
That's the way we have it drawn here. And with the idea that we can also flex one class into another grade if we needed to at times.
Yeah, I mean, the only place where that looks awkward is between first and second grade. It looks like there's, is there really six pre-K and K classrooms?
There are, we have actually, we've modeled that based on what they have now and what they would need as we migrate to full-day pre-K. And there's also an additional classroom there that's in the, for me, it's purple. It's in that far upper and left classroom. That's the actual, we'll go ECSC or the special needs classroom for pre-K. So there's, there's a number of classrooms there that could flex. And we see that from year to year, like you mentioned, where we might have, one year we might have three, a need for three kindergarten and the next year four, and maybe the pre-K numbers drop. And those classrooms obviously are the same size. They all have restrooms in them. So it allows us by having them grouped together to do what you talked about, which is to swing a classroom from one grade to another grade level. In the upper grades, we've talked about that as well with senior staff. And we've, we've found that, you know, there from time to time, the same thing happens. So just having them in close proximity, like you've got with the fourth and fifth in this level. Or even, or even the most extreme fifth grade class closest to the sixth grade, we could swing a classroom over and in most cases, they're only 30 feet away from the pod if we had to swing a class from fifth to sixth, for example.
Okay. And then I assume, I mean, the way the traffic flow looks, there's no problem with ingress or egress, especially the egress onto Cooper Street? And did we do any traffic studies?
We have done a T, a traffic study, a TIA as they call it. And the city has been working with us to review that. We've only, we only had one or two questions that we're working through with the city right now. Most, most having to do with how we, how we turn out onto Cooper from our, from our exit. And we can accomplish that by, we planned all along, I should say, to make a right turn only onto Cooper just for safety reasons. So we've talked internally about how we will direct bus traffic to the campus to only be making right turns and not left across traffic lanes at Cooper and things like that. So we've, we've heard from the city and everything they've talked about on this particular plan seems to be doable. And to your question and even an earlier question about the, that you had about the stacking onsite, you know, parking for an event. We have a nice luxury here because the site's so large and our driveway is so long. We should be able to, in most every case, the city requires us to stack 100% of the cars onsite at pickup time. And we're able to do that with this plan, which should translate to what you were saying, which is, do we have enough space for cars if we had a big event or a parent, you know, some sort of PTA event or a presentation by the students by grade level and the students and so forth?
Yeah, no, it looks great. You know, my only other concern would be, you know, impact that crossing zone, that crossing zone, there's a number of families that walk to school across Cooper. And, and those crosswalks get highly used at high-traffic times of the day. It's a very busy street, so I didn't know if this plan shifted any of those and
It does, it does actually.
Or created even unintentionally, maybe created more hazard there.
The plan does shift the crosswalk a bit to the south from its current location. And Mr. Will Banks, we've worked at the request of the superintendent. We've worked with the city and with, with the council of governments to identify possibly changing that crosswalk and exploring some other safer options. And we don't have a definitive plan yet, that's in the hands of COG. But we're waiting a decision from them. And then once that's been determined, we and the city both are going to work on a plan to try to create a safer crossing for both the kiddos and their parents, but also the crossing guards. That's an extremely busy street, and so like you said.
You know, I appreciate that and I applaud you guys for doing that because, man, every time I drive by there or go there, I worry about those, all three of those, the crossing guards, the parents and then, and their younger siblings in strollers, the babies that are going across there. So we knew to make that safer, all the better. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do we have any other questions or comments, Ms. Walton?
Yes, thank you. What will, okay, we know how many students are going to be there. What, what will be our staff and support staff numbers for this building?
I'll take a stab at that. We have staffing ratios that we always apply to our, all of our student population. And so those staffing ratios will drive the staffing needs. And so we'll have, we've got adequate support spaces for administrative staff, nurse, librarians, clerks, what have you built in to this design. But our formulas won't change, they'll drive the staffing at the school.
Okay, so. Through school, and I think the staffs have kind of grown. Do we have a number for how many, what the staffing ratio, what's the actual number of staff that we have at Webb now for the 638 kids? Is there any way we could?
I can get that, but I don't, we don't have that
Okay.
Ending this evening, I don't think.
Okay, and where I'm going with that, how many staff parking places are there?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but it is designed to accommodate. We have, we're required to make sure we can accommodate all the staff onsite.
Okay, well, if I could, you know, if we could get the numbers of how many staff will be there and how many parking places there are for staff. That would, that would help with answering my question. And my second question is about bathrooms. It's very obvious on the kindergarten wing where each one has its own bathroom, which is, you know, the very best way to do it. What's the, what do bathrooms, what's the bathroom situation for all the other pods? For all the other grade levels?
They have, they're very close to multi-user restrooms. So I think there's either four or five toilets for, for boys and then for girls. And they are spread across so that they're very centrally located. And there's two areas on each side of the school for that.
I think it's important to note too, Ms. Walton, that those numbers too for restroom counts are driven by municipal code. So we have to, we have to have a certain number per person or per number of people in the campus, the users. So we definitely meet the municipal code for that. And most likely, we probably exceed that given the way we use restrooms for the pre-K and kindergarten.
Okay, on the, on the schematic, what, I could tell what the, where the bathrooms were, you know, the little boxes for each room. Where are the restrooms located otherwise on this? Can you point it out to me on the schematic?
Yeah, let me pull that up here.
So yes, they are located, there's going to be restrooms right outside of the activity room. And so kind of nestled between the music and activity. There are, and then there's also a larger group right there between second and first grade. And like you said earlier, this pre-K K wing has all
I gotcha, okay, I couldn't tell if that was a staircase or if that was a bathroom.
That's a bathroom.
Okay, thank you. And then what about special needs? Do they, is that? Okay, thank you. And then what about special needs? Do they, is that?
Yes, they as well, not every single classroom, but half of them have actually large restrooms so that they can fit wheelchairs and a shop.
Okay, okay, I think I can see one. They're kind of next to the outside wall. Okay, what about the, what about the next floor? The second floor, excuse me. What about the second floor? Okay, so they're stacked, yeah, they're stacked right on, yeah.
There's this large one here and then of course by the third grade wing.
Okay, so there's two bathrooms on the second floor.
Yes, and then there's also, there's also a toilet, there's also restrooms here just for the teachers by the sixth grade. And then one over here for the third grade.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. I don't see the teacher bathrooms, but that's a good idea. Okay, thank, thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to go back to the slide that has, we spent quite a bit of time on. It's the one labeled site plan in the bottom left-hand corner. Well, actually that, let me see, sorry, let me go full screen.
Hang on.
Yeah, the one that shows the field on the south or on the, yeah, on the south side. That one. So I just, I just had a question and this is, you know, I don't want to upset the, the schematic design at all, but I was just curious that the playgrounds are on the, look, it looks like the northeast side of the building. And then on the southwest side of the building, we've got a field. And I just think back to, you know, my days in elementary school and also, you know, my kids and they, their playgrounds are pretty closely adjacent to open space at their respective elementaries. And mine were, was at Crow and Atherton Elementary. And, and we frequently would go play soccer or football or different games on those fields that were adjacent to the playgrounds. And here the design has the playground separated from the field. And I wonder if that's going to inhibit our students' access to being able to do those things with the playgrounds and the location that they're currently at.
So these areas right outside of the school, although they're not shown as a field, those are also opportunities for play. And they're almost as, I mean, you can see from the scale of this, this area above, it's two quite large playgrounds. You could fit that again just here to the southwest of the school where you would come out of the building right outside of the cafeteria space. There's plenty of space there for the kiddos to run and play. And then this drive that you would cross to get to this potential soccer field. We don't anticipate this is going to be heavily used just because of the circulation patterns that we're showing here.
And if I might to Mr. Chapa, that, that field, we listed as a field, we kind of superimposed a small soccer diagram or lines over the top of it. It's, it's really kind of a, if you will, a kind of a bonus. This, because of the scale of this site, this site's so large, being a former junior high. The, the site where the school is sitting on currently is still larger than many of our elementary school sites. That's why it just looks a little dwarfed because of the overall size of that block of land. And that's kind of what Ann's saying. There's a lot of land adjacent to the playgrounds that are to the north and even around the school itself. And, and that particular field was, was, was again placed there kind of to show you that we still have room for a field, even if we use that future development for some other type of school facility in the future. But it does serve, it would serve Webb too. For a field day, they could have a nice field day event over there if they wanted to or have multiple, it's a luxury really for Webb in this situation.
Okay, no, thanks for that. And I, and I know that it's kind of hard to get a sense of, of place and scale from these, these drawings here. And so as, as long as there's room adjacent to the playgrounds for those types of play activities to take place. I mean, I think I'm okay with this. I just want to make sure that there, you know, that there is adequate room for that, especially if we are, we do have the bonus field. I don't want it to be a spot that's over there and, and not really used except, you know, maybe by PE classes. Then the other question I had does involve the playgrounds. I know that we have, and shown on the schematic of the, the floors here, that we have a sizable special needs population here. Many of them wheelchair bound. And I just want to make sure that the, the playgrounds that we're including here would be specifically designed for that population. I know that we're rolling out a new playground standard, but you know, is there any anticipated going a little bit further for the particular population that we have here at Webb?
Yes, sir. In fact, we're going to be bringing the playground schematic designs to you in the, in the next, in the coming weeks here. And we actually had parents and, and actually a couple of students who actually came to our Shret meetings and spoke to us about the needs for specialized equipment. And so this playground while, or these two playgrounds, along with both Beckham and Cookin, will have new equipment very similar to all of the other schools. Those, this, this school and the other two will also have a few added elements that the other schools don't have for students who maybe can't support theirs themselves or their weight so well. And, and they, instead of a swing, it might be a chair or, or even just what we would typically consider a swing, kind of a strap to sit on. They may have a large desk, for example, that they can lay a student on and still be able to experience that swinging motion. So absolutely, we've, we've taken that into account and this playground will look a little different than some of the others. It'll have smart equipment.
Will there be any equipment that would allow a student to just roll up in their wheelchair on?
Yes, sir, there would be. We, we've looked at, and you'll see that in the designs. We've looked at a design where we might have a merry-go-round feature that a student in a wheelchair could roll their chair onto, it's at the same, be at the same level, just like it would be if you're rolling on a sidewalk or something. And, and they would be able to lock that wheelchair down and, and still have the same experience the other students have.
That's great. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you so much and very pleased with this design. And I know the community will, will really appreciate the upgrade from the current digs.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Fowler?
Yes, if we could, thank you, President Mays. If we could go back to the slide with the collaborative space. Okay, on this, and it was mentioned that there'll be ways to get to the collaborative space from the classrooms. Is that by a door or is there like a sliding wall? How will, how will there be access to the collaborative space?
With doors from the classrooms.
Just regular doors?
Yes, regular doors with a view light in it and then next to the door with glass next to the door, not across the entire wall, but just to create a little bit more visual, where it was shades where you could close them if you needed to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Are there any other questions, comments, motion? Do I have a motion? This is a discussion action item. Mr. Will Banks. You're muted.
Sorry. I move approval of the schematics as presented.
I've got a motion by Mr. Will Banks, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Okay, so a motion by Mr. Will Banks and second by Dr. Reich. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, are we adopting the, are we, are we needing to adopt the option one of the color scheme in this motion or is that understood or is that necessary?
You're shaking your head, Dr. Reich, which one?
Yeah, I, I would think that part of that motion is with that color palette so that the team can move forward.
Okay, option one, option A.
Polly, would you like to amend my motion with that?
No, no, anyway, just that it include option. Option A for the front colors or, or the glass colors.
Okay. So a motion by Mr. Will Banks and second by Dr. Reich for the option A colors. Any discussion? Okay, since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. Dr. Reich.
I vote yes in favor.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. All present voted affirmative and the motion passes. Thank you very much, architects. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you too, Mr. Horn.
Thank you, likewise. Thank you.
Okay, so next on our agenda is consider a resolution of the Board of Trustees to address racial and social equity in the Arlington ISD. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And at this time, we've been working with our governance committee on this resolution and I will turn it over to Mr. Chapa as the chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. The board has been watching the events of the past few weeks closely and the governance committee has discussed taking action in response to what we've seen happen across our nation. And I think it's appropriate for us to do so. You know, anybody who is familiar with the history of schooling in the United States knows that school systems have, have enabled and perpetuated systemic racism throughout American history. And in fact, you know, Brown versus Board of Education is, is probably one of the best known Supreme Court cases to our students and to the society as large. And, and it really was a case about schools. It was about whether governments could deny educational opportunity to people because of their race. Less well-known is how school systems nationwide fought for decades after Brown to defy its teachings, directly contributing to the systemic inequalities that remain for us as a society to address today. But yet it is school systems today, I think, that play a very unique role in promoting equity and dismantling racism so that our children are equipped to lead in the future and right those historic injustices. And to that end, I'd like to return the mic to President Mays to introduce a resolution on racial equity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapa, and thank you to the governance board. I would ask our board, my colleagues, to each read a portion of this resolution so the community can hear the words come out of our mouth representing 100% commitment to this resolution. And with that, I will read the resolution, starting. Arlington Independent School District Resolution of the Board of Trustees to address racial and social equity in the Arlington ISD. Whereas recent events have renewed attention to prejudices, injustices and inequalities embedded in social structure and in society and?
Whereas Arlington ISD recognizes that all students deserve to learn in a system free of racism and social injustice. And whereas Arlington ISD student population includes 46% Hispanic, 25% African-American, 19% white and 4% other children, of which 73% are economically disadvantaged at 78 campuses with more than half of the district's campus receiving free meals through the community eligibility provision and?
Whereas Arlington ISD collaborated with the nationally recognized Holesworth Center to design and implement progressive systems to identify, place, develop and support high potential leaders who understand and meet the needs of our diverse staff and student populations and?
Whereas Arlington voters passed two bonds for $1.6 billion to address overcrowding in East Arlington and to increase program access and equity for all students. And whereas Arlington ISD has a longstanding partnership with equal opportunity schools to identify and close access and success gaps of underrepresented student populations in advanced academic programming and?
Whereas Arlington ISD has implemented aggressive measures designed to support equitable student participation in specialized programming, including opportunities at the Dan Dieter Career and Technical Center and two early college high schools. And whereas the Board of Trustees has completed equity training with Dr. Pedro Noguera, Professor of Education at the Graduate School of Education and Information Studies and Faculty Director for the Center for the Transformation of Schools at UCLA, who is a critically acclaimed scholar and author of Race Equity and Education and?
Whereas the Board of Trustees recognizes the need to examine racial, racial and social inequities within the district, in particular as it applies to black students, staff and communities and?
Whereas the Board of Trustees supports the district in embedding a strategic focus on the fair treatment of black students and staff while promoting their academic and social success within Arlington ISD's curriculum and culture.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees calls upon the district to conduct a comprehensive examination of its culture, curriculum, instruction and internal systems and to strengthen, improve and modify our institution as needed to ensure racial and social equity and to remedy systemic bias and racism. Adopted this 11th day of June 2020 by the Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Reich. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Fowler. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, Ms. Mays, Dr. Reich was, I think he was, had a clarification or real quick.
And Dr. Reich, I apologize, I didn't see you.
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm so proud of this district, this board for enacting this resolution. This is a, a beginning, a, a call to action. And I am so, so proud to be associated with each and every one of you. Our, our community, our nation is, is in pain. What do we do when a person, an individual is in pain? We reach out, we, we provide love, we provide care. And this is a direct step of action and just beginning to, to remedy racial and social injustice. And I just want to say to each and every one of you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. This is going to be wonderful for, long-term for our staff and our students and our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mays, and thanks for leading this charge and to my colleagues and all of staff for, you know, everything we do in this district is very thought out and very thoughtful. And I think this resolution, as we've read this multiple times and saw this, it, it gets us to that, another very thoughtful of what are we doing for every student, especially our African-American students in this district. So with Dr. Cavassos, with that, before we happily vote and glad to vote on this, what are our next steps from, from the district standpoint to have action on this?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, for the question. And I too want to reinforce the, the thank you to our board for this resolution. I think it's been mentioned, it is a beginning, a strong beginning. We know that we've been involved in equity work, but we have a long way to go as many public school systems do. But we're talking about Arlington. And I'm proud of the fact that we are putting this down as a resolution. But we're talking about Arlington, and I'm proud of the fact that we are putting this down as a resolution. And so, Mr. Hogg, to your question specifically, this is, as it states, an examination of our entire system. Curriculum, instruction, culture, and systems that, within our system, work for the promotion of students and staff. And that examination is one that is a thoughtful process. And so, we would begin this work, Mr. Hogg and Board, with listening. And over these past weeks, that's something that I've reinforced, because listening is very important. All the answers do not exist today, and we know that. But we also know that together, we can accomplish much, as we have as a district, on so many fronts. And so, things such as listening opportunities for our students to give us feedback, our staff, our community, also the leadership of this district. Very strong leadership that we have that you get to hear from at every board meeting. Dr. Brown, Dr. Wertz, individuals that lead major functions of our organization that will be involved in bringing people together from the community, but also from our staff so that we can examine those systems. Mr. Hogg, it may also include some assistance from consultants that have pursued this work over many years that could provide valuable insight to a school district and to us. We know that we, like I said, we can accomplish many things, and we have, and over the years, we've proven that. And this is one of those times that we must recommit and reinforce these examinations for action. And so I do anticipate that we will be bringing back to the board a process, bringing back to the board updates, and then collaboration on policy changes, structured changes that need to happen within our school system. Again, I thank the board for taking this step.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Any other remarks? Okay, so we have a motion by Dr. Reich, a second by Ms. Fowler. We've had discussion. So, once again, since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes if you are in favor of the motion, or no if you are not in favor. Dr. Reich.
Proudly vote yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Booby Hogg, proudly vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I also proudly vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative and the motion does pass. And if I could just very quickly just say, thank you. I think that thank you comes from a lot of people within this community and within this district that have wanted to be heard, but do not feel like they are being treated equally. And I just wanted to say that I have confidence that this board will make sure that this resolution stays alive, that it has breath, and that it has meaning. And with that being said, thank you again. Next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to withdraw the two consent agenda items dealing with the easements at Crow Elementary.
Okay. Okay, noted. Mrs. Powell.
Yes, President Mays, word members, Dr. Cavassos. This evening, there are no bids or donations on the consent. We have a budget change, a waiver request for missed instructional days during the closure, and an item designating the superintendent to be the official responsible for calculation of tax rates that are published as part of the taxation notice.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of withdrawn items D and E?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Minus D and E.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
To Will Banks. So we have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Okay, see you now. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes if you are in favor of the motion, or no if you are not in favor of the motion. Dr. Reich.
Vote yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes. So now we will discuss the consent items that were withdrawn. Who would like to speak? Thank you, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I had some questions about these two particular consent agenda items. If Mr. Horn or Dr. Cavassos could speak to them. We have easements come across our docket pretty regularly, and they're usually, you know, minor things, you know, couple tenths of an acre here or there. These are substantial easements that create, at least from my reading of the documents, substantial obligations on the district. And then also with my familiarity with the Crow campus and just looking at the documents we were provided, seems like quite a bit of land is going to be taken on the Crow site to, by my unsophisticated eye, to put essentially a trench or creek down a good portion of the back part of the campus space. And so I was just wanting to get more information on these particular items.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and Ms. Powell, I think, has a diagram or some visuals for you, and we'll go through that explanation. I think it shows what's trying to be accomplished there. So, Ms. Powell.
I do, and I think is Mr. Horn available to answer the question? Otherwise, I will. Okay, I'll start. There, Mr. Horn, are you?
I can speak, but I don't have any visual, sorry. But yes, would you like me to cover this completely?
Yes.
Okay, so with the new project that we have at Crow, we have two easements that have been identified by the district and the City of Arlington that need to be addressed. The first easement is the largest of the. Thank you, Frank. The first easement is the largest. It's the easement that runs through the, and let me see if I can grab. If I can request a remote control, so I can use a cursor. But the easement that is the largest easement that starts on the far bottom part of your of your screen, right down in this area, in the far right corner. At that point, that's where we pick up water that's emptied onto our site, and we convey that underground along the entirety of this red line that goes to the north along our northern boundary, and then it follows that boundary to the west to what would be a large, a new, a large detention area for stormwater. And that's, that easement, of course, is on our property, and we would be dedicating that easement to the City of Arlington because we're connecting to their system of stormwater drainage. Then, across or adjacent to our property on the golf course, if you see the yellow box that I've outlined there, that just denotes an easement Exhibit C. I'll come back to that in a minute. But there are two Exhibits A and B that are in red that are City of Arlington Drainage Easements, where they're dedicating that to the district so that we can, in fact, build a drainage outflow on the golf course property. And that drainage outflow, we constructed out of what they call riprap rock or large rock. You've seen that along, you know, highway bridges and things like that. It just allows water to flow without eroding the soil base below. And so that yellow box that you see that I outlined there is Exhibit C that just denotes the area that we would be responsible for from now on to repair if it becomes eroded or in some way the integrity of it is compromised. Otherwise, the city would be responsible for vegetation control and that sort of thing in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. So just to be clear, that new area that's indicated in yellow is not on our property, that's on the city's property?
You are correct, sir. Yes, sir.
And can you explain to me how the cost sharing would work on with this proposal in front of us?
There is none.
So we would be granting, we would be granted an easement on city property that we would maintain going forward?
We would maintain it from the standpoint of if it became damaged in some way because of the outflow, we would have to restore the riprap, but otherwise, the general maintenance that would occur annually or month to month would be performed by the city and the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, would we, we would pay for the construction of this riprap area, though, correct?
Yes, sir. And we talked with the district's attorney regarding how this could be written and how we, what we were capable of undertaking. And all we are capable of doing is the primary construction and any future renovation of that area.
Okay, and you mentioned early on, you said that the water flows from the, I guess that's the trying to look at it, maybe the southwest side of the property flows towards the backside. I guess it would be the east side of the property.
Yes, sir. It's a little unusual, you know, when you look at it on a flat screen like this, you're, you're, you're it's hard to imagine water going up, you know, up and up the screen, but.
Yeah.
Corrected. So up on the top of the screen is north, and the highest part of the site is down here.
Right.
Far bottom right corner, and there, you can see it down there at the bottom, there's a square just to the left of where that red line starts that I drew earlier today. And that square and that little dark spot is the stormwater outflow from the, from the city streets. And that, the water that collects on Highland Drive and on Coke Drive is dumped onto our property, and then it migrates across our property. You can actually see a dark green line that kind of weaves through here. The reason why it's dark green is it stays nice and moist all the time, and so it grows grass really well. And so, for us to be able to use our property better and to convey our water underground, we applied to be able to connect to that city stormwater drainage outflow and put all of this underground so that we could have a more usable playground and also control the stormwater that enters our site.
Okay, so just again, I'm just trying to be clear here. So this line that I'm seeing is not going to be some massive trench cutting across the property and reducing the usable space, like say at Rankin. This is going to be buried underground.
Yes, sir. It's a rather large rectangular, or what we call box culvert system.
So. So we would just, it would look almost like it does now. It would look like a field.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're responsible for the cost of that construction?
Yes, sir.
Is, are we being required to do this because of our construction projects? Because this, I mean, the site has been here for a very long time, and the water has flowed off of those streets for sixty years.
Yes, sir. It's being required in order for us to move forward with our project.
And there's no cost sharing?
No, sir.
Okay, those are all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Are there other trustees with questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I couldn't see you. Sorry, Ms. Walton.
The, I understand the culvert's going to be buried. There's kind of a triangle shape between where the underground pipe ends and the riprap thing. What is that going to look like? Is that above ground, below ground?
That, that, that area on the, that's not on our property, Ms. Walton, that belongs to the golf course, that's a rather low area that, that where all of that water currently outflows to, and that riprap would be above ground, but it would be at a lower elevation than our property.
Right, I understand about the riprap, but the, that, the triangle that runs parallel to the parking lot, the teacher parking lot. What does that look like? Is that underground or is that above ground?
That would be above ground. That's a, that's a stormwater detention pond, if you will, much like we have at Peach and at Gun and at a number of other schools throughout the district. It would be, that would be a rather large detention area that would have large block walls and a fence around it with probably some trees planted here and around just to try to soften it a bit, but it would in fact be a large detention area.
Okay, but it would be fenced and, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Safe.
Yes, ma'am.
For our students, okay.
Yeah, because of the depth of it, we would actually, we would absolutely have to, and it probably resembles or will resemble more closely what we have at Peach, if you're familiar with that up there.
I will have to go look at that again. Okay. Thank you. That was, the safety concern was my issue. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, President Mays.
Yes, Dr. Reich.
Mr. Horn, just to, again, talk about this, this new underground site and the extra cost involved. Does, was it the city, was it an ordinance change? Was it engineering studies where they think there's going to be an extra exorbitant amount of runoff because of what we're doing, seeing it's the city collectors that actually are connected and running through the property more than our property itself?
No, sir. It's primarily just the city's attempt to, to improve drainage and collect it, move it underground. We intended or we wanted to, to move it underground because it, it creates playground is not very flat in it, and we were trying to recover more usable space for our students as we, as we make this addition. And so, honestly, it was just one of those situations where in order to do that, we needed to get that water and convey it. And it also is a requirement from the city, you know, through their engineering department to improve that, and then improve it further on the downstream side where, like Ms. Walton was just asking about. They would like for us to hold that water and release it in a more, in a more controlled way so that it mitigates any potential flooding downstream.
Okay, so, I mean, there really is benefit for us with additional, as you said, usable face, safety concerns as well. If that, you know, in the middle of a storm, that water's flowing, somebody out there, it could cause obviously some harm. So I benefit there. And, yeah, with the safety in, employed on the, I guess that would be the north end there. It seems, seems completely appropriate to me. I, I mean, I, I think we could, we could try and discuss and have more conversations with the city, but, I mean, really, I do see the benefit for us as well. I don't know what the added cost is, but it is something that we're partly desirous of as well, so. It, it's, and I guess I just want to be clear on that. It is, it is, it's mutual. The city's requiring, but we're also kind of requesting for the enhancement, right?
Yes, sir. We would like to gather the water, you know, through that site, both the water that's out, that outflows onto our property and our own water so that we can improve the property as well. So we'll, we'll make every use of that and collect all of the water around our site from the roof and so forth in the parking lot, and we'll convey that underground and channel that into that system so that we have, it will help us against future flooding and so forth.
Yeah, so on, what will that look like? Will there be drainage? uh, access points to that pipe then all through our property or will it be, uh?
We might have, uh, we might, for example, um, and I, at the top of the site or what, what's the bottom of, of your screen, but at the very high point of the site, there would likely be a manhole there. Uh, and then where it makes a bend down up on the north end, we'll probably likely have a manhole there. And then, and then, uh, it will be open at the end where it empties into, uh, the ta- the drainage pond. That, that per- particular system is a really large system. So, um, I mean, it's, you couldn't stand and walk in it, but you could very easily crawl in it on your hands and knees. It's, it's a very large system. And, uh, probably three feet by four feet, uh, wide. And so it's a big, big rectangular culvert.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Horn, if I may come back, do we have an estimated amount, um, dollar amount that this is going to cost us?
I, I could get that, uh, from the schedule of values since we've bid this work. But, um, and I, and I probably should do that rather than take a guess, but I will get that information for a fact and provide that to the superintendent so he can share that with you.
I- it, it's not a small amount though, is it right?
N- no, sir. It's rather a large amount.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have anything further.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Are there any other questions, comments? Dr. Cavassos? Okay.
Yeah. I would just add, Ms. Mays, just to, um, maybe some context. You know, we get into a lot of discussions with the city. And we work to find solutions. Uh, so I think in this project, Kelly and Cindy can correct me if I'm wrong. If it's not this solution, it has to be a solution. And back to Dr. Rice's point, um, there, there, a solution has to be found because of the water and the volume and the improvements we're making. So, um, when we get to these kind of situations, it's what's the best solution? And I can tell you that Kelly Horn and the city, um, and, and our engineers, et cetera, they work hard, they work hard to find solutions. And sometimes when we don't agree with a solution, doesn't mean we can't have a solution. It means we have to find another one. So, um, anyway, just that context that, that, uh, a solution needs to be found for, because we are improving that. Sometimes we don't like the solution, um, just to be clear. Uh, but, but we know that there has to be a solution for drainage in particular and, and fire lanes and things that, that are very, very critical and, and we have to find a solution. And I just commend Kelly. I know these, this is one of many projects, Kelly, that you work on. And, and just, just I commend your, your persistence with, with and, and advocacy and finding solutions. You're very, very, very capable of that. So I just want to say that to everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you for that context, Dr. Cavassos. So do I have a motion to accept the congen- the consent agenda items D and E?
I'll make the motion that we accept, uh, agenda items C and, I mean, so D and E.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Do you have a second? Second by Doc. A second by Dr. Rice. So I have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Dr. Rice. Are there any discussions? Okay. Seeing none. Think I have this memorized by now. Since the meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. Dr. Rice?
Aaron Rice, vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
We, we Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote no.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. So the motion passes with one vote no. Six votes yes. Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. Uh, like we do and have been doing every board meeting since closure, we bring an update. Uh, we want to make sure the board is, is well informed. Uh, even though we communicate often, uh, with updates, uh, well informed of the, of the latest. And so, uh, Dr. Hill is prepared to go through some of the revisions uh, that TEA has made to the summer learning guidelines, also some U I L revisions. We do anticipate more revisions next week. Uh, so this is an ongoing effort and I just want to pause real quick and thank Dr. Hill for, um, managing and leading this effort because it's a lot to, uh, continue to adjust and adapt. Every senior staff member, et cetera, are working on their part. Uh, but Dr. Hill organizes the, the updates and helps us kind of, uh, understand them and then begin to implement them. So I'll turn it over for some updates, uh, related to how we serve our students in the summer and, uh, et cetera to Dr. Hill at this time.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Cavassos, President Mason, Board. Uh, thanks for this opportunity again to provide just an update on the Pannebic response. Uh, we're going to break the presentation into, uh, topics dealing with summer instruction, uh, food service, just an update there. U I L athletics and, uh, and marching band updates. Again, we, uh, initially received a six-page, uh, update from TEA and that, that has now grown to an eight-page update. Some of it was, uh, some of the same information, but a couple of more pages of, of updates that we received, uh, this week. Just a little about, uh, the summer instruction. Uh, this is not new information here. You know that these are preliminary programs that we'll be offering this summer. We shared this last week, uh, and those areas have not changed. Uh, academics and enhancements, some remediation, some bridge camps, CTC certifications that start next week. Uh, U I L, uh, athletics has already started. We're about four days into that with a lot of good participation. Uh, just some operations and, uh, management. And then the activation of the Career Tech Center for some, some additional certifications there. Uh, updated guidelines from, or guidance from TEA regarding summer instruction. We got this as recent as the ninth, that's a couple of days ago. Uh, requires the, uh, school systems to post some summary practices that we use to mitigate, uh, COVID-19 spread. Again, we've got, uh, attacking that from the areas of, uh, uh, custodial from health services and some other areas where we, we will work on, uh, making that information, uh, public. Uh, recommends identifying a point person at each school regarding COVID-19 concerns. Uh, again, working on that increases the number of students allowed in a class using three factors. Uh, one, a minimum square footage per person. Uh, the desk spaced, uh, spaced six feet apart and then an overall cap of no more than twenty-two. Again, we're working on what that looks like per campus, per building because again, classrooms are different sizes and, and that, uh, those factors have been considered. Uh, allows participation for non-U I L activities now. Adds hand washing stations as an option in addition to hand sanitizers. And we're working through what that looks like at each campus. Provides a cl- additional clarification around, uh, wearing of mask and face coverings. And just, uh, some additional, uh, recommendations to, uh, be in alignment with CDC that were not, uh, previously, uh, included. Uh, additional recommendation regarding adding physical barriers to desk. Uh, uh, amends a transportation recommendation that allow, uh, uh, students who live in the same household to be able to sit together when we start that transportation piece. And then adds recommendations related to school planning for, uh, response to a COVID positive or symptomatic student. A little bit about the face coverings. I know that's been a hot topic and we're kind of still, again, this is all new to us. So we're still trying to process through it, but consider having, uh, the recommendation is to consider having all staff members wear face coverings over the nose and the mouth. And consider having all students wear, uh, face coverings, uh, that are developmentally, developmentally appropriate and then at the right times. Uh, there is, uh, also we learned that, uh, in collaboration with the governor's strike force, uh, TEA has, uh, purchased or procured some, uh, P P E for all school districts. And that P P E includes, uh, disposable mask, gloves, uh, uh, no-touch thermometers, hand sanitizers, reusable masks, face shields and dust dividers. That allotment is based on on-campus counts for the nineteen-twenty school year, uh, for both staff and students. And we anticipate that, uh, in July or August, we're working through, we've got a, a survey that we've got to complete. And then we've got to basically go out and, and I think it's something similar like placing our order. Uh, but we're working through what that all looks like and how we receive that and make sure we've got appropriate storage for it and things of that nature. At this point, I'll turn it to Ms. Powell and she's got a couple of slides on the food service update on, uh, where we are with regard to feeding kids and another opportunity for students and families. Ms. Powell?
Thank you. All right. Uh, Michael, you can go to the next slide. There you go. So, um, we, as we've mentioned before, we've, uh, we, we moved to a two-day feeding plan, shifted the hours a little bit for summer. So, uh, we now serve curbside service Mondays and Thursdays from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. Uh, students can still come through. Any child eighteen years of age or younger, uh, is eligible to pick up meals. Uh, each day, a parent, uh, coming through the line with a child will pick up, uh, food for breakfast and lunch for three days. So if they come both Monday and Thursday, they will receive food for a total of six days. Uh, we have added, uh, this week, a, a daily service in our high schools in support of the strength and conditioning programming, uh, going on at those schools. The times vary by campus. They're coordinated with the athletic coordinators around their respective programs. Uh, and we actually serve these from the concession stands and that's not unusual. We've done that, uh, in the past for these programs. Uh, that's a daily meal service. Um, the times and menus and then the sites, uh, are all posted on our website. Uh, you could see the, uh, web URL at the bottom. Uh, through June the eighth, uh, we've served over a million four hundred and seventy-five thousand meals to students. So, Michael, next slide. Another thing that, uh, we have been asked by the state to help communicate about this is a program that is, uh, provides a one-time benefit through the U S Department of Agriculture and the Texas Health and Human Services. This is not a program that school districts administer, but, uh, we have been tasked, all of us, uh, with communicating the information out to families. Uh, there is this one-time benefit for families of children who receive SNAP food benefits, uh, for in March. If you were on the program in March, you're eligible. Uh, children who are certified for free or reduced price, uh, meals during the, the normal school year and, uh, children who attend, uh, a school that offers free meals to all students. Uh, our, our community eligibility, uh, provisioned schools. Um, if you fall into one of these eligible, uh, categories, your family can sign up online and receive a debit card, uh, worth two hundred and eighty-five dollars per eligible child. So if a family has multiple children, uh, and they qualify, then you would receive two hundred and eighty-five dollars for each child in your household. Uh, the benefits, uh, again, are administered through Texas Health and Human Services and USDA. Uh, we have, uh, posted information about the program on our website. Um, we've also, um, sent, uh, information, uh, to parents uh, of our students who are on free reduced lunch or attend the community eligibility, uh, provisioned schools to make sure that, um, we help get that word out.
Okay. So the next topic we'll kind of give an update on is, uh, guidance that we've gotten regarding U I L. Basically, this reinforces that the attendance at the strength and conditioning camps remains optional and that we must be keeping attendance, must be screening and ti- checking temperature, uh, if possible. Participation is limited to the space that is required for social distancing. So we've got, again, we had over twelve hundred kids across the district that showed up to the camps on Monday of this week. And we were able to space them out and meet those requirements. There are limitations on the, the hours per day. Uh, again, and no locker rooms, no showers available, hand sanitizing and washing stations must be there. Going to start allowing, uh, gymnasiums and weight rooms, uh, to be used, uh, for U I L sports only. Uh, with the smaller capacity, percentage of capacity early on, then that will, uh, continue to grow as we got some dates. I think June twenty-second is one that, that we're anticipating, uh, a little bit more relaxing of the, uh, capacity. Requires disinfecting after each use and we're making sure that we have the, uh, disinfecting materials to do that. And, uh, that's not a problem. They're mandating, uh, four or five dates that we must close and those are there and our staff knows what they are. And we are prepared to do that. And then there's guidance for, again, that, uh, positive COVID-19 case and how we would respond. And regarding fine arts, again, the same, basic same, uh, expectations, uh, uh, keeping attendance, screening and temperature checks. Fifty percent, uh, capacity for indoor starting on June twenty-second. Again, students must maintain social distancing of six feet when not practicing and ten feet when practicing. And consider students not actively, uh, practicing to wearing face masks at all time. And, uh, one of the changes is starting on the twenty-second, no limit on the size of the working group as long as there are, uh, the social distancing requirements are, are still met. And then again, how, how we respond if, if there's an actual positive, uh, case that's identified for a student or staff. So as we continue to get these updates, we'll continue to implement the guidelines, monitor their outcomes and communicate with, with everybody that's involved. Uh, we'll make the adjustments that's necessary to our protocols and we'll continue to monitor the guidance from, uh, state and local health authorities and the TEA. And any feedback that we get that's necessary to, uh, potentially make some changes. With that in mind, we'll, we'll take any questions that you may have regarding, uh, this, this update.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Powell and Dr. Hill. Are there any questions from trustees? Any comments? Yes, Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. And hey, Dr. Hill, let me ask the question. I know we're just talking U I L, um, and I've seen some posts, because normally our junior highs do summer workouts and training camps. Were any of the junior high kids ever allowed to go anywhere, do anything? And also, I guess there's, you know, we hold a lot of camps a lot of times in the summer, our, our coaching staffs for the younger kids. Is there anything for the younger kids to be able to do those that they normally do in the summer?
Right, right now that the opportunity is there, uh, I think what we have to, uh, keep in mind is that there is this, this requirement of one coach for every twenty kids. And that's what the, that the challenge right now is for our, our coaches at, at those high school camps. Uh, we try to get as many in as we can, but when we're faced, or basically that restriction of one coach for every twenty kids, that, that's where the, the, the challenge meets. I can check to see how many junior high kids are attending because again, we are te- uh, keeping attendance. But, uh, that's something I can dig in a little bit deeper.
So are junior high, so junior high kids are allowed to attend?
The strength and conditioning. In the past, they have been allowed to attend. I'll, I'll just have to check to see what the current expectation and the allowance is again, to meet that one to twenty, uh, ratio requirement.
A- and let me ask, is there any, uh, you know, usually on these summer conditioning programs, our coaches rotate off, they bring people in, they, they do this with that one to twenty. Or, and, and listen, I know they're excited to be back there, working with these kids. They've, all I've constantly heard is, is you hear how much they miss their kids and their stu- their athletes. Um, is there, or do we provide by asking them one to twenty, meet those rules? Is there any compensation or any stipends or anything for these coaches?
We, we, uh, again, have these strength and conditioning camps every year and it's a part of our budget in athletic department. So we are compensating coaches for, for their, their hours that they're working these camps.
But, but I'm asking, because I, it, I mean, my assumption I'm making is it's way more coaches than we normally have to have at each of our summer conditioning camps by that one to twenty rule, correct?
Well, we, we either increase the number of coaches and we have done that, or we limit the number of kids to meet the, uh, to basically to, to align with the number of coaches that we have. We try not to turn kids away and so we will increase the number of coaches. And we do have the budget in the athletic office to, to compensate those additional coaches.
That's what I wanted to hear. I, I don't want to hear turning away kids like they, I've seen the excitement. These young men and women, uh, have been wanting to go out there. And it's, uh, I think the hardest part is they do have to physically distance from each other. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any other trustees or comments or questions? Dr. Rice?
Thank you, uh, President Mays. Dr. Hill, on the, uh, Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Hill, on the, the, the fine arts guidance with U I L, you talked about the indoor and maybe I missed it, but what about outdoor? What, what, like for bands, what, what can they do?
They have those same social distancing requirements and so the expectation is, is the same. They can have those groups, those distances, the same expectations indoor or outdoor.
Okay, and just to put, put it out there, there's been a lot of people in the community asking with the announcement of the Fourth of July parade. I don't know what that looks like, how that's going to happen. Are, are our students and directors, are we, are we looking and moving that direction or not? Is, is it out of the norm, saying they haven't been together the entire spring to work on some tunes that they would normally already have in, in play and so it doesn't require as much work? Do you have any information on that?
So I've been in communication with that Dr. Anderson, who's been in constant communication with the campus fine arts directors to kind of discuss what that could potentially look like. Normally, in the month of June, that would be the only thing that they would be preparing for. And so with this recent closure, they haven't had that opportunity. We've talking with the fine arts directors, trying to understand what that may look like moving forward. We would potentially have to see what the student interest would be and, and something like that. And so he and his team are working to try to understand how to best address that because they are getting those questions as well.
And what, what, what kind of deadline do we have? Because we're already at June 11th and, and the whole thing is just almost unbelievable to me that we're, we're able to move forward with the parade and such short timeline in general for our city. I, I know that puts a lot of extra, you know, consideration and pressure on, on our, our directors, our students. So what, what does that timeline look like as far as assessing student interest and, and will?
In talking with Dr. Anderson, it's, it's imminent. We need, if we're going to have this conversation, we need to get on it like yesterday. So we're trying to understand all of that and give them some guidance and direction.
Okay, yeah, keep us posted on that because I, I can't tell you. I, I get asked just about every day since that announcement was put out there. So is AISD in or not? And I keep saying, it all depends on what the guidance is from U I L and TEA and that's constantly in, in flux. And we have a, a little bit more solid footing right now, but it's also June 11th, didn't it be June 12th? So we are three weeks away from a parade. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Walton.
Yes, I had some similar questions to Dr. Reich's about the parade. It seems to me that if these kids have got to march 10 feet apart while they're practicing their instruments, it would seem like they'd be marching 10 feet apart in a parade also or in a performance, which certainly does make for an interest, you know, and how they could hear each other, you know, at that distance and do something collectively, musically. On very short notice, I can see why Dr. Anderson is certainly trying to sort it all out. One more question, is there, with the, like with the coaches and their, their students, is there a ratio of adults to students with the bands?
Yes, and that ratio, I don't know exactly what it is. I think it's pretty similar to the one to 20.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, keep us posted on the parade deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I have one question, Dr. Hill. Have we heard when we might get word on attendance to our athletic events?
We haven't heard that specifically. Athletic Director Eric Wyatt is in constant communication with the U I L athletic department and Dr. Elsa. Again, all of that is, is while it's U I L related, it's coming from TEA. And so they're collaborating on what that looks like. We anticipate that when we get updates from what happens in the school building, that will be coming right after that. But at this point, we don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from trustees? Comments? Okay, so once again, thank you very much, Dr. Hill. And thank you, Ms. Powell. Okay, so next on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. So then we will move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, in the, you know, brief report. And that is that, you know, we had a successful graduation event at AT&T Stadium. And I just want to thank again our entire staff, our principals, our teachers, most especially our students. They did exceptionally well and I am so proud of all our graduates. It, it was a big effort to adjust, to, to plan and, and ultimately to implement. And so thank you again to senior staff that worked on graduation, but also the principals and their teachers who worked as, as graduation implementation. By all accounts, it was very, very well received. And, and I appreciated everyone's participation and support of that. And one more time, thank the Dallas Cowboys, Jean and Jerry Jones Foundation, specifically Charlotte Jones for the generous donation and, and making something very challenging, something very special. Not only for our students, but their parents and families and communities. So that's, that's it on my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. Are there any trustees with reports? Okay, so I'll just say graduation was great. So excited. Dr. Cavassos, as you said, so proud of our students. Who would have thought they never practiced? If someone didn't tell us, we would have never known because they did an amazing job. And I, I think that we might need to reconsider maybe how we sit on the stage because I enjoyed being able to say congratulations to every single one that walked across the stage and just the excitement in the students' faces. And I'm sure it's just because of everything that we've been through and being able to see their friends. The teachers are so excited to see their students. So it was, it was a happy occasion for several reasons and I'm just very glad that we had an opportunity to participate. Okay, so Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have a question for staffing numbers for web and the number of parking spaces that have been put into the schematic. We have a question for Mr. Horn for the cost of the construction of the underground stormwater conveyance system at Crow Leadership Academy. And a request for Dr. Hill to keep us posted on the Fourth of July issues, parade issues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Secretary. Okay, with that being said, it is 8:52 and this meeting is adjourned.